All right, we're running a little behind, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this work session meeting to order on July 1st at 4:34 PM. I can't believe it's July already. Yeah, sorry, I want to thank those who were able to meet a couple of weeks ago with Directors Blone, Claussen, and Superintendent Degner, myself. And we had the chance to hear from you and have a direct conversation about issues in our district. At our board meeting last Tuesday, we did have an item on the agenda to further this discussion with the remainder of the board and some of the admin team. During that meeting, it was discussed that it would be more effective to allow some more direct conversation with all the parties involved. So we weren't misinterpreting or passing on any inaccurate information. You know, so here we are, all with all the board members present, as well as some administration representatives. We're all here to listen and to provide a chance for clarity, as well as ask and answer questions. Because we do have a quorum of board members, this is a public meeting, so it's a little bit different than the last time. And as such, there are certain rules that the board must abide by. Individual board members can offer their opinions and responses as their own, but because this is a work session, we are unable to take any action, any board action at this meeting. We would also ask that we not discuss specific employees by name or position at this time, but rather focus on the goals and structural issues that we can affect change on. And on a personal note, I want to say that this isn't because of a lack of belief or validation. I believe your stories and I hear you. However, teachers and administrators are have rights under Iowa code, and as board members, we are bound by that code. So with those things in mind, we can get started. Before I turn it over, I would pass on a piece of advice that I've learned from a large number of Zoom meetings. It is nearly impossible to pass or to go around and have everybody trying to introduce themselves, because everyone starts talking at once. So I would suggest that you introduce yourself the first time you speak, if you're comfortable doing so. And on that note, I'm Sean Istone, I'm a member of the board and also a parent to two students in the district. At this point, I'll turn it over. Whoever would like to lead the next part of the conversation, I don't know if that's you, Kiki, as you are kind of our point person, or if somebody else is doing it, but I'll leave you to it.
We had Sophia, who's going to take point in talking, but it seems that she got locked out as a panelist. Is there a way to bring her back in, or do we need to just keep going?
I'm not sure how she got locked out. I did see that, and this is Kim Coleman, by the way. And I just resent her the panelist invite. Is it Sophia Lusalla? Is that who is missing?
That's, that is who we're seeing. She was the one who was having breakup with her mic when she was in here.
Okay, I did resend that invite, so we can watch for, if she has trouble, if she can let someone know, that'd be great.
Okay, seems like she's rejoined.
Okay, I'm back in. Do introduction or?
I, I just suggested that we introduce ourselves as we start speaking, because it's really hard to go around the table when we're not actually around the table.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I can just start us off. My name's Sophia Lusalla. I go to City High School right now. I'm gonna be a junior next year, and I'm also a part of the IFR and helping out with things there. And if anybody else wants to introduce theirself before I start speaking, or we can just introduce as you go, like you said.
I might can go next. My name is Renim Hamad. I'm a graduate of Iowa City West High School. And I am currently a rising senior at Columbia University, and I'm also an organizer with the Iowa Freedom Riders. I was also one of the organizers for Slants Against Gay Discrimination in 2016, so I'm really excited to be working with the school board again on this stuff again.
I'm Kiki. I am a community member of Iowa City. I am part of the Iowa Freedom Riders. And Sophia, I think we should just go into the talking points.
Okay, so first of all, me and the IFR would like to thank you guys for meeting with us last week, and we look forward to continuing the conversation over some of our school, school board demands with you. And I'd like to restate the seven demands with a background of importance. One, or also A, is an alternative school review board process for students who are sent to alternative schools. A more diverse school board that is representative of the members of the community. The complete removal of SROs, School Resource Officers, from public schools. An actively anti-racist curriculum that demonstrates a well-rounded and complete knowledge of Black history in the United States. We contend that this may be implemented through anti-racist personnel in the hiring of a diverse staff that is qualified to do the work necessary for these changes. Create an equity team slash community involved task force to rewrite the ICCSD discipline protocol, so that it's free of language and behaviors that target students of color. Draft a document that includes a culturally responsive tier of consequences. Create a tiered list of consequences that can be recommended to hold schools accountable for the over-representation of African Americans receiving officer referrals and suspensions. Provide mental and financial support to support. Recruit and retain teachers, administrators, and school board members of color. And then empower the district equity committee to hear complaints of racial bias from students and staff with tiered levels of consequences, and allow this group to make recommendations to the board for consequences. Bounder racial harassment claims. Is there anything I should repeat? Okay, I'm just gonna move on. We liked some of the responses posted by the district and equity community, but have questions and changes that we would like to address at the next school board work session. And the purpose of this meeting is to address and work on these demands to take actionable steps. Sorry, not to have past policies explained. White voices dominating the conversation and performing erasure and gaslighting to these BIPOC experiences and not white fragility and privilege create excuses and derail this meeting. This meeting is not to attack, is not an attack of any kind, and is a call for accountability and to dismantle the systems of oppression for transformative justice. We are asking for a timeline for the, sorry, I'm reading so fast, guys, I'm sorry. We are asking for a timeline for the comprehensive diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. We also request a written response to commit, to the commitment made in last week's meeting on June 23rd, 2020, to the additional demands, which are the following. Do you agree to openly support Black administrators in their roles and to discipline all insubordinate staff? Do you agree to update the evaluation process for teachers and administrators to require cultural proficiencies as a requirement for keeping their job? And do you agree to put time stipulations on meeting the goals outlined in the comprehensive diversity and inclusion plan? And then, Kiki, do you have anything to say, or should I just keep moving on and talk about our first demand?
I think, well, the talking points is for us to go through each, the district response, and then out notes, changes, or comments to their responses. They can have them by each demand.
So we should go each demand by demand, or like each demand? Okay. So, as we said, our first demand. Our first demand is an alternative school review process for the students who are sent to alternative schools. And the district, district response was a review referral process for the Tate High School and present disaggr- oh, sorry. I'm sorry, guys, referral data. You guys said that you would identify steps to address disproportionate enrollment at Tate. Establish protocols and training for staff as they discuss Tate as an option for students. Review rigor and standards of alternative high school education. And I am so blanking on this word, I can't pronounce it, but I'm sorry. Disaggregate, disaggregate, and present course enrollment data by race to ensure high expectations for all students. And then continued support and guidance for students in advanced level courses. That was your guys' response. Do you guys have anything to add to that? We liked your guys' response, but we would like you guys to be more specific about disaggregated. Oh, sorry. About more specific about the data. And then, with the identify steps to address disproportionate enrollment at Tate, we would like consequences for schools who are over identifying students that go to Tate. And also, who are these counselors gonna be, the teachers and the, who are the counselors and teachers and principals that are over identifying these students? And then for the review rigor and standards of alternative high school education, we would like the district to track students of color to ensure that they are leaving high school with an appropriate degree. And then, also on the review and rigor standards of alternative high school education, we would like a POC, a third-party review of student records for non-bias input. And then on 6A, we would like a review on the K6 ELP recommendation policy. Also, who will be providing support and guidance for the students in advanced level courses? How are they selected and evaluated? Also, community level slash parent partnership to help support students in the referral process to Tate. Do you guys have any questions on that? Is there anything I'm missing?
I know I didn't hear anything. The, I get the question that is being asked via board is that with what we're saying to improve slash change, or the questions that we have in regards to your guys, the district's response to it, did that help clear the demand up, or do you guys have any new questions? Or does that just completely make sense, and we can move on to the second demand?
I have a question. So when you're asking for more specific data, what exactly are you wanting? I mean, just so our administration can know what the ask is, and I'm, I'm assuming that they would wanna know what the ask is behind that the first bullet point, what exactly is there? What, what are you expecting? What is it that you would like to see in that information?
Okay, it's in reference to the point five that was given to us by the district, which is review referral process for Tate High School and present disaggregated referral data. We were wondering what you guys meant with the presented disaggregated referral data, like what is that, to be more specific on what that is? So you're actually on your guys' side. Well, the, I mean, I get that confused on the district's side, since it was there.
So Matt, do you? Yeah, I was just gonna say, so I was gonna jump in here too, because silence is a problem, and I didn't want you to think we weren't willing to respond or have the conversation. So hi, I'm Matt Degner, interim superintendent. Nice to see you, Kiki. And for disaggregated data, disaggregated data, excuse me, I'm having trouble with the word too. When we talk about that, it's really about breaking it down by subgroup, specifically by race, to see the rate that students may be being referred to Tate, I think from our initial conversation. That was part of the concern, that Black and Brown students were more highly being referred to Tate, which I think anecdotally, we would agree with that that's happening. And so then, the first step in the process to figure, is to figure out exactly the specifics around that number, and then to identify the appropriate steps to try to change that. And so, I think that's what we were meaning around disaggregated data, is to first present what the data looks like. What does the enrollment at Tate look like? What is the demographic breakdown around that? And we can break it down in multiple ways. I think race is obviously specific to this conversation, but also by poverty level, free and reduced lunch status, ELO, IEP, some of those demographic characteristics too. So, we, we can be more clear on that when we do present the data. That, those are some of the lenses we look at to, to present that. So, but overall, I'd say, I think I understand what you're asking for in the improved change category. I'm assuming maybe on the last one, is the one where I would have had a question, community level parent partnership to help support students in the referral process to Tate. That's probably my assumption, I'm working from here, is to help them better understand the choice in front of them, right? That even if they feel like it's a choice, or they've been presented this as this option to go to Tate, that there's some level of assistance to ask relevant questions, or to better know potentially what they're signing up for, or what, what is the next step when they're going to Tate, what that means for them. Is that kind of the general feeling there?
Yes, but also, not with just also the student, but also making sure that we're giving outreach to the parent too, who this referral, that there is all the support and that they need getting presented to them with this referral. Because we're finding that there is a lack of communication to what's happening to their kid, also all the way back to the, to the parent. If that makes sense. And also, anyone else with IFR want to clarify that, and that is what I, I'm pretty sure we understood, is what we were asking with that one.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Awesome.
Hey Matt, sorry. This is Paul Rassler, one of the school board members. And I just, maybe Matt, can you clarify for everyone? When students would get referred to Tate, because I definitely don't want it to be viewed as a punishment to go there. I mean, there's some positive outcomes that come out of there, and kids that kids that choose, I don't know, that they may choose to go there. So I guess what my question is, is like, how does that referral process work? Just so everyone knows exactly how that works. I'm not sure everyone necessarily does, so can you just cover that with us?
Sure, so I think there's the intended way we would like it to work, but then I think what we learned from the initial conversation, or from some of the stories from folks were, you know, Tate being used as a, what do I say, maybe punishment, or that, you know, if you don't do this, then, then you will go to Tate, were some of the stories we heard from, from the Iowa Freedom Riders the first time, and so that was a concern about that. You know, there, and I think to that last point that I was asking for clarification on, it was really around the understanding that how Tate, Tate is presented to families as a choice or an opportunity, and are they really aware and fully understand the implications of that decision? So even if they feel like they're making a selection that's in the best interest of their child, is that the best interest? You know, some of the things we would hope would come from the process, as we've tried to work for it, is students that are behind in credit acquisition, that it does give them a chance to graduate. And then I think the, the conversation the last time, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but kind of gravitated towards, what are they able to do once they do graduate high school? Is that, is that playing field still fair for them? Do they have those same opportunities in front of them, that if they would have graduated from the traditional high school? And so, last time, I talked about trying to address it on two ends. That referral into Tate is something we need to continue to look at and improve our process around, but then also trying to look at our core program at our home high schools as well, so that students don't fall behind in credit acquisition. And some of the interventions that are, at our secondary schools do keep them on track to graduate and keep them in their home schools. So it's really a twofold problem, that, you know, for some students right now, it may be presented as the only option for them to get to graduation based on the amount of credits. But we need to have less of those situations be occurring on the front end, so that more students can stay incomplete. But then I think the, the secondary concern was, you know, where, what are the opportunities in front of them when they do leave our, our K-12 system, if they graduate with that diploma? So for some students, yes, I think it's a, it's a bright moment, it's a success. But I think, you know, from what we heard in some of the other stories, is the way it was portrayed to other students was not in that regard, that if they didn't, you know, shape up or, or something to that effect, then they would have to go to Tate in that, in that sense. And so, again, I don't mean to put words in people's mouths, but that was kind of the impression I left with, and, and we tried to talk through that twofold approach about how it could be addressed. So, in a later conversation, I think we can walk through what we've tried to do to improve that process, and where we still think we probably have some ways to go. And then, obviously, these guys are asking about the disaggregated data, that as we know, we look at data, that's a general trend of ours that we need to continue to do, and that would be an area we need to do that for as well.
But also, just to also add on to that, that it wasn't just that it was being presented to some students as an opportunity, but other students as a punishment, but to see the disproportionate students who were presented to it as a punishment were students of color, were BIPOC students. And that's where our improvement is, is we want to get specific, which is why we are asking for like consequences for schools who over identify. Like what is happening? Who are these referrals coming from? Who are recommending these? And why are they recommending it? Which is why we want to look more into this data and see how this is happening, because we're finding that it's predominantly a shortcoming for BIPOC students, more so than their white counterparts.
Yeah, thanks for that, Kiki. That was important, right, about who that conversation has had with, right? That that conversation takes place differently with different groups of students. That was a, that was a key piece, so thanks for that.
And I would also like to add one more point regarding the disaggregated data. We would love, we would, we're actually requesting that data not only be disaggregated, but disaggregated and combined with respect to race and gender, because you want, there's a lot of, you know, patterns in regards to those, when looking at data with those two specifically. So, that's also a request that we just wanted to add, to reiterate again.
This is Charlie, a school board member. Matt, actually, I want to ask you this question. Disaggregated, aggregated, disaggregated data can be both by race, ethnicity, MRL status, and so forth. We can also do it by building, and that's something we haven't, we don't have a lot of history with doing that in the past. So if that's going to be part of this conversation, and the, one of the ask, it's the way I read them anyway, would require looking at data by building in some way. So if that's going to be, I, I would interpret that as an ask on the part of the Iowa Freedom Riders demands. And if it is, we should be able to say, if we're gonna be able to respond to that or not.
Yeah, that's easy for us to capture, to know which school the student was at previously, so we can definitely disaggregate it by that way. And I think that would, yeah, that would be a very informative piece of data to look at too, in regards to, to what they're asking here, and just overall for us as a system.
That I just have one more follow-up to, Matt, so I guess it was surprised to me, your news that it's being presented as a threat to students. I was not aware of that, to be honest. And so I'm just curious what you guys have done since you've had this previous meeting, and have heard this type of story come out, to begin to address it with staff, you know, how to correct it? Like what have you been working on that plan, and what you want to do to address and correct?
Well, Paul, I feel like that's what we provided at the last meeting, is some suggested action steps. Obviously, that, that's twofold as well, right? There's the district action steps, and then there's the individual conversations that would, that I think these guys are referencing around counselors, teachers, and principals, and about how that conversation happens in problematic behavior, and then how it is dealt with. And so, being off-session right now, there are some things we can do from a process standpoint to get in place, but then there's, there's other, I guess, individual conversations that need to happen as we move into the school year as well. And so, you know, at some point, I don't think we're gonna have probably the time or all of the, the right pieces of information to look at here this evening, to talk about what we have done on the Tate referral end. Because I would say that there are some problems that, you know, I think we were very in tune to and aware of, that we've tried to work actively over the last year to 18 months to improve around the referral process to Tate. I think what we're hearing from the Freedom Riders is keyed into, you know, some poor examples where conversations are had with kids that do not match our expectations. And when that happens, I think that goes to another piece that we presented to you guys around, what are the students and families' channels to address that concern? Because I think sometimes they also reported that maybe some of those traditional channels or the existing ones are not the most effective to have those concerns heard or addressed. And so, that kind of goes into even what we're considering around the ombudsman role. You know, if it's a harassment type situation, or a racism type situation, or just a, an aggression type situation that we're dealing with. And so, whatever that concern might be, whether it's Tate or otherwise, I think the overall picture we need to look at is when those situations occur, what are, what are the appropriate channels for families and students when that happens? Because we can create policies and procedures, but then there's the adherence to those policies and procedures that needs to happen too, and behavior that needs to be corrected when it's problematic.
I also just wanted to say that a part of, like, looking over that data is also to see like the amounts of Black kids and like kids of color that are being put into an alternative school, and see where, where that's off on things. But I think you guys understand most of it. Is there any more questions you guys have? Okay, if no one else wants to speak on that issue, or have any questions, I guess we can move on to our second demand, if everyone's okay with that. And our second demand is a more diverse school board that is representative of the members of the community. The district response was a statement of support for an ICCSD Board of Education that reflects the larger community. And then the Equity Committee response, or the Community Engagement, was an immediate action, was, we recommend taking immediate action on DEI Action Plan 5A. Increase representation and engagement from parents, students, and community members from underrepresented, underrepresented groups in the district and school activities and decision-making processes. By encouraging the greater parent participation in the Parent Equity and Engagement Survey, and by holding listening sessions to elicit community feedback on the results of this survey. Under the ICCSD Comprehensive DEI Plan Goal 5, to attain increased stakeholder engagement, parents, students, and community members, we recommend adding the following critical tasks. And the critical task is to develop a racial equity policy that mirrors the work the district has done with the LGBTQ plus equity policy. Um, with the district response, we would like you guys to specify in statement racially and economically diverse. And then, structural barriers to being a member of the school board. Add to IFR, or sorry, I'm reading that rude. And then, on the community engagement, how can we bring more voices to the table to engage them in school board discussions? Bring liaisons from certain communities, come and give report, liaison, sorry, my bad. Liaison. Come and give report, or having a standing committee created by the board to go and talk to the liaisons of the community. We do, we do, um, I'd just like to point out that the IFR does understand that if we wanted to have like, uh, like, oh, I can't think of the word, but so that it has to be, has to have people of color on their board, that that would be at state level. I just wanted to point that out, that we do understand that. And then a clarification of the cultural liaison position. And then on the critical tasks, we said that the LGBTQ plus equity policies and the development of racial equity policy have accountability that they have properly, that has probably, properly been executed. What is the status of the LGBTQ plus equity policy? And why do you feel it will be beneficial to the racial equity policy development? And if these policies aren't being implemented, there needs to be set consequences. The consequence, the consequence for termination, or for a hate crime should be termination. Is there anything you guys have to say on that?
I do want to
Go ahead, Kiki.
I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify with the note that is made to the critical task development, a racial equity policy that mirrors the work the district has done with the LGBTQ plus equity policy. We understand that the equity policy for the LGBTQ plus has been drafted and has been placed, but we would like to know more of like the status of like, how is it effective? And if it even is effective? And then why do we want to combine that with the racial equity policy? Seeing that there might be some things that might coincide, but essentially, they are two separate policies and should be treated as such. So we wanted to, I just wanted to just fully help people understand what that bullet point means and that section there.
I have a quick question. Is it okay to ask? Like, I'm not a board member.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so, hi, everyone. Nice to meet you guys. I am Laura Gray. I'm the Director of Diversity and Cultural responsiveness, and I lead up the LGBTQ Committee.
Laura, you just muted yourself.
Oh, sorry. We just started off, so like, we were just educating the health teachers around the new admin guidelines that were approved by the board in regards to how to teach the health curriculum in a more non-binary way. And we're looking to revamp the curriculum in the near future. We didn't get far in regards to We didn't get far in regards to making sure that there were other things in place with the teaching staff. We sent out a one-sheeter like outlining the the main points of like the big changes in regards to like, you know, how students can use the restroom of their choice and the pronouns and, you know, those sorts of things. But we didn't, like COVID-19 hit, so like, like it kind of rattled up our ear. But now, can you help me understand, was the suggestion that this be lumped with with racial things, was that from our our district staff? Or is that from you guys?
I think the suggestion was that we would use the work that was done to create the L G B T Q plus policy to help create a new policy. I don't think there was ever the suggestion of lumping them together, but maybe I'm wrong on that. But I think that was from the Equities Committee's responses to things. So if one of those folks, you know, had the answer, that would be great. But I don't think the idea was to lump them together, but use the work to have a process to follow.
Got it. Okay, so like, that's why I was trying to understand because it seemed like, Kiki, it seemed like that was posing a question in regards to why we would do that. But the only thing I could think of in regards to why the Equity Advisory Committee wanted it that way. And I worked with that group too, but they advise us. So like they created the document that they had. My understanding behind, or their rationale behind it was that the it's just really clear forward expectations in that they are, you know, that's the expectation has been rolled out. We've been sharing that there will be consequences if people are deliberately not adhering to it. But I know though that a lot of those things are protected under Iowa Code because they're, they fall under that bullying harassment, like, you know, making sure kids stay safe. And so if we're thinking in regards to of like discriminatory harassment, like if if we're talking about keeping black, African-American, Latino kids free from discriminatory harassment, definitely we can frame it around, you know, those same things. But I just would need more clarity in regards to like how we would match it hand in hand because a lot of it has to deal with what students can do. What, you know, what people don't need to have an opinion about. Do you get what I'm saying? Like those really specific things to say, we're going to make sure we're not harming kids, whether people agree with their lifestyle or not.
No, I understand what you're saying. That makes sense. Not essentially was our question of like, what did that statement from the Equity Committee mean? Develop a racial equity policy that mirrors the work the district has done with the L G D, L G T P Q plus equity policy. And but those questions have just been answered yourself and then answered, I think, by Sean, explaining that it wasn't a, it wasn't a matter of bringing them together and lumping them together, but more so of like, this outline seems to be working or has a similar outline, so we can use this to jumpstart another outline. If that is the case, great. Now that we understand.
There was, there was confirmation in the chat from Jane, who I believe is the Chair of the Equity Committee. She confirmed that that was the intent of it.
Awesome. And that was just the clarification of it because, you know, sometimes when things are on paper, it doesn't always seem to make as much sense as it felt when written down. So in regards to that, are any of the other improvement or changes or questions making sense? Are we okay with the improvements that have been made? Does he want any more clarification of anything?
I guess I have one question. The cultural liaison position. I'm not, I don't know if that's a, is that a position we have?
Yeah, Laura, could you talk a little bit, Laura Daly, do you mind talking a little bit about that cultural liaison position and how that's structured through the district? Or some of our cultural liaisons?
Yeah, so we have two part-time cultural liaisons that currently are working for the district or were employed, you know, last year and will continue to work. And we've got two other part-times that we, that will be starting here kind of at the onset of this this new school year. The purpose of the cultural liaisons are to be a bridge between cultural communities and school staff to be able to help inform and educate us about ways that we can vary and change and improve upon our supports and services and communication as well as just help. You know, they're not interpreters or translators. Certainly, they come from that cult, from a diverse cultural and language skillset. But you know, that's, that's not the intent. The intent is to really form a relationship and help families feel connected to the school. So maybe the first point of contact might be through the cultural liaison to be able to connect a family to the principal, to a counselor, to the student and family advocate, to, you know, the school in general. So that the goal then is to be that bridge and to help say, here's, here's how I can help you navigate. What questions do you have? Help the staff see and examine their own practices, you know, behaviors that may be impeding that natural connection and to feel as though, you know, they, you know, because we know that we can all learn better. And so the cultural liaison is really there to provide kind of that initial support. We don't have, you know, the capacity or funding to have a lot of those positions. And so each of them that we have is just a part-time position. And, you know, we'd certainly like to build upon that in the future, but through some save dollars as well as through some immigrant Title III funds is how we're funding those positions. They are not to take the place, you know, of our student and family advocates that also work to provide a lot of support to families, but to really work alongside them. They, that's, I guess, a general overview, but let me know what other other questions you have about that.
Thanks. I appreciate that, Laura. You know, maybe down the road, it'd be nice to get an update on how many contacts and that sort of information.
We keep data on that. So absolutely, we could, we could share that.
And that was the same question for, for I F R as well, was the clarification of the cultural liaison position. We were curious too, like what did that entail? What did that look like? Who would be in it? How would it run? All of that? What would their say be? I do want to ask, what do you want to clarify and ask a question or this question will ask for clarification? There we go. Questions that are being answered in regard to this document, do we have someone who is taking minutes or who is also writing down these answers so that then we could also have hard copies post this meeting to then also continue to look over in the future?
Because this is a public meeting, it's recorded. The whole thing is recorded. So it will actually be posted on our board docs. I'm not sure how quickly that is, but it's pretty fast. So it'll be there. I'm guessing that multiple people are taking their own notes as they go along. But the meeting itself is recorded. And my understanding of Zoom meetings, and I'm no expert by any means, is that even the chat and things like that get recorded along with it. I'm just not sure how easy it is to access that part. So that's why I tried to mention that there were questions in the chat or answers in the chat out loud, just to make sure that that's captured. But it will all be recorded and for public view because it is a public meeting.
And Andrea, I think that's how you pronounce her name, Jane, said that she thinks another important aspect of marrying the work we did with the L G B T Q policy development is that we, they had a committee to represent the L G B T Q community. So if we were to have like a similar committee for the racial equity policy, then that would be a good way to mirror it as well.
Could I add one more thing about the cultural liaisons, just to add a little more context? The, at a board education committee session that we had earlier this year at Mann Elementary, we reviewed the Family Leadership Institute that Lottie Esther, she's a student and family advocate. But she was explaining the experience that she and had with the Mann community and going through that series of the Family Leadership Institute sessions. Our goal is also that our cultural liaisons would be a part of that and to receive some training and support so that they too can build capacity to provide more of that.
I think we're ready to move on to the next one. Sophia, if you want to.
Okay, great. Kiki, are you muted? Or are you trying to say something? I just, I don't know.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, no, I just saw your face pop up. I was wondering if you're trying to say something, but I'll move on to the next one. Our third demand is the complete removal of S R O secure, school resource, resources officers from public schools. The district response is non-authorized. But the Equity Committee says that, or the police presence, this is what they're speaking on as the police presence is, we appreciate that the ICC SD Board of Directors previously voted not to fund school resource officers in the ICC SD schools. Current events have underscored how S R Os can be detrimental to the safety, support and inclusion of all students. Immediate action was passed a resolution that any future decision to add S R Os would need to have a super majority of the board voting in its favor. And under the ICC SD Comprehensive D E I Plan, Goal Three is to create equitable, inclusive and supportive school environments. We recommend adding the following critical tasks to the D E I Plan. And the critical task number one is to pass a policy that the members of the Iowa City, Corville, University Heights and North Liberty Police Departments should not routinely patrol the school grounds of any ICC SD schools. Sorry, I'm stuttering. And then critical task number two is formally request the local law enforcement officers not to come on any ICC SD grounds except by request. Critical task number three, implement specific protocols for when it is appropriate for ICC SD teachers or staff to request the law enforcement officers come on school grounds. Critical task number four, each of these above also applies to extracurricular, school-related activities outside of school hours such as sporting events. And critical task number five, review procedures for when local area police are called to campus to assure issues are handled with equity care. So we just had, we had some concerns about these ones. And on critical task number one, add language, cut all ties with I C P D. And then critical task number five, school principals must call down to E S C to inform them that the officers were called. Follow up with the teachers, school and students to hold them accountable after a call to police is made. A public record should be kept of all students, all schools for tracking instances whenever the police are present regardless of the reason. Is that, and we were wondering if there was data from previous instances of police presence at all schools? And if so, this must be made public as well. On critical task number five, comprehensive review of police policy, the community-based task force need to include parents slash caregiver in guardian contact. Officers are called, should not be armed. And critical task number four, add the language for locations, bus or after-school programs. Critical tasks two and three, remove the language except by request. The police are not needed for any on-campus or school function incidents or events. And by the except by request, when we mean like, even like police officers coming to visit just to see someone in the school, we do not want that at all. And there, there are other organizations that can come in and provide the same resources police give that are more qualified. Oral examples given here are unnecessary needs for police and other resources, resources provitable. This ensures full safety and security of the entire school body versus some. This includes the voices of parents of children with disabilities within all identities. More transparency with the threat assessment team is what we'd also like is is student information being shared with them? Is this a gateway to having S R Os in school and can parents opt out of this? What is the status on the threat assessment team? Assessment team, my bad. So we'd like an answer on that. And then more funding for additional therapists and counselors to come in instead of police. And all new written policies must be reviewed by the Equity Department, teachers and the I F R. And I'm sure you guys have some questions on that one. So feel free to just go ahead and speak.
I have one question that's, I don't know, I guess for Matt maybe or anybody else in the district that actually knows the answer. Can we create a policy that requires a super majority for future boards? Is that something we can do?
I think you could create a policy. The problem is it could be undone by a super majority of another board, right? I mean, policy changes happen by the board in place. And so whatever policy you have is going to be able to be changed by a future board. And so that's what makes that difficult.
Okay, well, I asked the question because I know that, you know, we as a board were pretty adamant of not having, you know, S R Os in the school. And it has happened in the past and it has been voted down in the past. And in my head, I'm always trying to figure out, you know, how do we keep it from continually coming up and having to be voted down? And I was intrigued by the idea that the Equity Committee threw out there that we require a super majority that makes it harder to, you know, change our current state. But I didn't even know if we had that authority. So I, that's what I'd be looking for is somehow to have a lasting impact on that specific topic for sure. Because I know it has come before multiple boards over multiple years. And it's probably not the last time that it will happen. So I would like to make sure that, you know, our will and our intent here is carried on, you know, past this board being here.
I think your best route would be, obviously, we can consult with Joe and then we could root it in policy, you know, is the best. But I think that's just going to be the challenge is that a future board could change that policy. But you may not, or I don't think we have it rooted in any kind of policy right now that we do to not have S R Os. So that would be a step that you could take. It's not quite exactly what their demands are calling for here. But we don't have that, that it has been passed and rooted in policy that there's not school resource officers. So that would be a step that we could take. And we could also consult with Joe to see if there's anything you could do to strengthen that. But my fear is, right, that that's just going to be the backend challenge to that.
And I think I agree with Matt. You could, we could write the policy, which would just be another step to make it harder for future boards to change that because they couldn't just come in and vote for it. They'd actually have to go through the, changing the policy, which would allow community members time to voice their opinion as well. I mean, that's an extra step in that whole process. I also just wanted to make one other quick point on the Equity Committee's critical task number one that they mentioned. I think we also need to add Johnson County Sheriff to that list, which I don't think is on there because I think they would be the only ones that would cover hills if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, thank you. We'll note that.
I just want to make one comment. This is Jeremy Taber, Director Equity and Employee Relations. Is I have to have a policy with the Occupational Safe Health and and it helped Occupational Healthy Safe Administration with the government that we have to be able to contact local authorities if there's a situation of violence or a threat of violence. That's something that we have to have. I just want to make sure that that understanding is there.
I'm sorry, you're saying that there, you're finding that there is a reason that we need to be able to contact local authorities?
If there's the, if there's the potential or a current situation that is imperative, that is going to cause harm to a student or a member of the staff, then they are required to contact law enforcement for them to be able to come outside and try to deal with that potential threat to the health and safety of anyone in the, in the building.
Did you repeat what that was for again? Because that's, sorry, I'm not meaning to like attack you in any way, but we're also like looking at introducing counselors to come deal with those situations where a student could be under by another student. But can you just explain what that was for again?
It's for the Occupational Safety and Health Administration. That's a federal organization that we have to have something in place where we can require, or excuse me, where we have to have our staff be able to contact police if there's a imminent physical threat. For example, if someone was on property, would they fire arm or something along those lines where no one in the building would be able to address that situation? So law enforcement would have to be contacted to come in and address that, that potential threat.
Okay, so with that in regard, you're talking, you're talking about. with that in regard, you're talking, you're talking about there's a specific, uh, like committee, so that keeps that as a requirement within policy that they.
This is, this is a, not a committee, but this is a federal organization.
Federal organization, thank you.
Yes.
For us to, for us to propose that there are other resources that aren't the actual police that can better assist that kind of situation. We would have to go to the federal organization, like you guys.
There would have to be, yes. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the, the conversation, but it would be difficult for that exception to be made. Because someone other than law enforcement would not be able to properly address someone on our site with a firearm. That is an imminent threat to our, the safety of our students and staff.
I'd just like to jump in here. This is Charlie again, the School Board. Jeremy, with respect, I, I think this, uh, this demand envisions situations that really don't necessarily involve immediate threat from a, a student who has a weapon. And I suspect that there are many instances where we're still calling local police or sheriff's deputies on campus. For instance, for situations that don't involve weapons.
And I just wanted to make that point clear, Charlie. I just, I didn't want to leave the conversation without that point being, being made. So everyone was on the same page with that.
Yeah, I know. And it's, and it's a good point. We definitely, a policy would have to encompass that OSHA requirement for sure. But I, I'm saying, I think a policy could be drawn that would encompass that OSHA requirement and still get at the situations that the Freedom Rider groups are trying to, to improve upon.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. So with that OSHA requirement, and we're discussing specific like firearm situation. Then yes, that's something that, um, that is out of the school board hands. That is something we need to address further along. But what Charlie is saying, and I agree with, is that we are assessing the times that Iowa City Police or the State Sheriff's Police and police of any kind are being called to the school for both positive and seemingly negative reasons that can easily be solved by other committees, organizations, or groups that can de-escalate some of these issues. Examples of having maybe the K nine unit come in with police officers today for relief. That can also be used instead of the K nine unit with police, you could use a local kennel that can bring in some of the rescues and they can come in and do the same kind of relief in that kind of way. Just those kinds of examples of where you, there's actual other resources that are better and are more acceptedly or more welcomed by the, the mass of your school board and faculty. Yes, in regards to a gun, yeah, that's going to deal with something differently. But with other, with almost every or any, all other kind of occurrences, there are other organizations or persons that can handle it or just de-escalate or provide the same kind of positive reinforcement that people are using the police for. And that is what IFR is addressing.
So if we.
No, Matt, yeah, this is Ruthina, School Board Member. Sorry, I didn't mean to say no. I was just like, let me go. I just wanted to highlight that Laura made a good point in the chat that I was going to say, but she also said it. That we do have people within our administration that can help train the appropriate people in our buildings to know when the situation is appropriate or not to involve police under the OSHA guidelines that our district has to follow versus, um, calling in other community-based services, whether it's social workers, mental health providers through, and hopefully, once we get our care assessment team in place, we will have these people that will work with our administration to further train folks. So we're not calling police on our students when they're just saying, I don't want to do this. Or that they're having a breakdown because the day has gotten too tough. Because we, we do still have those instances that we all know of that's happening in our school. And that's what, um, it was my understanding when I had the conversation with the Freedom Riders is that's what we want to avoid, those instances where other resources are needed and not resources of starting our kids off with a police record. Because things can always go left when we bring in the police when a child is in other type of distress.
Absolutely. I, I understand that. And like I said, I just wanted to make sure that, that, uh, that there was that differentiation. When we, you know, there's certain words when you say, um, you know, something needs to be de-escalated. That has a pretty wide range of, of understanding. So again, I just wanted to make sure that, um, that that was clearly stated. And we were on the same page with that. I, I definitely understand what you're saying, Ruthina, and the difference in those situations. So, you know, that's not something that I'm recommending or, or believe we would have this for. There's, there's just those specific extreme situations where we, we would need to have local authorities in place to address those. But no, what you're talking about, Ruthina, would not be one of the situations where that would be, that would be necessary. That would not be an expectation.
And we're also, as you, if you guys are looking at the document in the what to improve slash change slash questions, we have the more funding for additional therapists and counselors, which would go with those situations that Ruthina is discussed, is, um, introduced or like saying. But for your situation, like, we wouldn't necessarily need, uh, local law enforcement to come in and deal with those situations. If we did have the trained personnels to deal with that situation. So we'd be happy to introduce it to, um, the, I forgot the organization that you're with, if, um, if we have to though.
He's talking, he's talking about OSHA. That's a, that's a federal, that's a federal organization.
Oh, oh, okay. Nevermind.
Yeah, that's what they're addressing at this point, and that would make sense. Um, I actually want to circle back to what Arthina was talking about with this care assessment team. So the care assessment team essentially is a threat assessment team. Am I correct?
Yes, that's right, Kiki.
Okay, so then with having that being what you guys are hopefully referring to, being the people to help train the, the ones that we need to help de-escalate these kinds of situations that do not warrant police. I would want to refer back to the, um, my note section saying that we would want more transparency. Transparency of like what even this team is, like who encompasses this team? How this team is formed? What are the policies this team follows? What are the regulations this team follows? Is student information being shared through this team? Like certain confidential information that could make certain biases to, to, to certain students to this team? Is this a gateway to just pretty much have like SRAs without actually calling them SRAs? Like, just can there be more explanation of what you guys are hoping this care slash threat assessment team is?
Sure. I mean, we can provide some more context on that now or later, Kiki. I mean, I, I think really the intent of the care assessment team or threat assessment teams was to not just rely on traditional responses that the system would provide to students that made threats of harm to themselves or to other students or wide, wide numbers of students. That we were finding that some of our traditional responses were not yielding, you know, the results or the outcomes for kids that we would have liked to see. And so that's why, honestly, we're also calling it care assessment. Because we know there are several components to when a student ends up in crisis and is responding to those efforts. There's a lot behind that. And so throwing the traditional system at them in that regard from the discipline or law enforcement end is not enough. I mean, there needs to be a whole wraparound of supports that happens there. And so Director Easton's brought up the point about we need to be careful about making sure we track our demographic data in that regard as we implement care assessment teams and who's being referred. We've had several conversations on the nature of that confidential data and where that gets shared and how that gets shared, that we have to be careful with that. And so I think a lot of the same concerns that you guys raised here, once we've talked about on the implementation of this. But I can tell you, the spirit of it is to stop letting the traditional, I guess, response be our response, that we need a, we need a different kind of response for our students. Because, um, you know, if student makes a widespread threat that they're going to come in and do a mass shooting in the campus, some of the, the outcome of that was not good for that, for that child or for the other, others involved in that situation either. It just wasn't sufficient. And so that's where the district went to work on, on trying to do better do threat assessment and to have a heavy level of prevention as, is a big part of that conversation too, and not just the reactionary mechanism. And so, so that's kind of a brief overview. I don't know how much more detail you'd like to go into with that. But, but that's been kind of some of the high-level conversation we've had with the board and the community on that. Honestly, we're in the middle of a lot of those conversations when the, when the COVID piece kind of happened. That was a big part of our work at that time. And, and then that slowed down rapidly when we moved off campus.
Okay, well then, thank you for that. And then hopefully, as it continues to develop and unfold, that there is still communication happening so we can fully see that. And not just like with us and IFR, but with the Equity Department, teachers, and also the public. Because I'm pretty sure they're going to want to know too how we are going to try to change from the norm of how we would handle these situations. But also, Jane Finch just mentioned in the comments, the Equity Committee has recommended the coordinator position be filled by a person with a social work or similar background.
Sure, I, I lost your last comment there a little bit. I don't know if it was my internet or yours. But I think one thing I had a question on here, Kiki, just to make sure we were tracking this correctly. Because if we read some of these things, literally, I don't think it's, it's necessarily what I'm hearing you guys say in conversation. I mean, what I'm taking away is a little bit, there needs to be a comprehensive review or conversation around when law enforcement's involved and when law enforcement is not involved. And Jeremy details a couple of the legal obligations we have responsibility to make sure we comply with. But then there's also some other softer components where I think is where the concern rests about, is there law enforcement involved in more instances than they need to be? And I think that's the work you're asking us to do and to look at in that regard. And, and then I think the data tracking on that, when, when the law enforcement is called and how we're reviewing that is a necessary component too. So I don't know if I captured that accurately, but that's kind of what I was hearing from the conversation there.
Yes, I mean, that, that's exactly what we're asking is that full transparency. Why, um, police have been used in the past, if that record is still available so that we can see to track where we're seeing some patterns in those instances. And then also to alleviate those, those times with what you guys are hoping to make with the care assessment team. But if that is the case, then to like, as that's being developed, full transparency in that as well to, to the Equity Department, to, um, the teachers, the students, the public, IFR. So we can understand how are you guys really trying to go about handling situations that keep being routinely used or handled by the police. So like, we're on, we're on the same path here if we, if we keep it that way. I, I was just saying that, uh, did I, I don't want to say their name wrong. But Jane Finch was saying in the comments that the Equity Committee has recommended that the coordinator position be filled by a person with a social work or similar background. That is what the Equity Committee is proposing. Something I think definitely, I would even push further to say that if, if we have that coordinator be a social work person of, or that, that background, but that there maybe are also BIPOC so that we can keep that door open in that way too. Because we also find when police are called on campus, it's predominantly dealing with BIPOC students. And sometimes even BIPOC staff. And so if we're going to, and by BIPOC, I mean, Black Indigenous People of Color. So if we want to have that coordinator, we want to have that position. I think their background and credentials is essential, but also, um, their race too, seeing that predominantly the issue is happening. And the reason this is being brought up to you is because Black Lives Matter.
I'd just like to add here too, that as I understand it, Matt and board members, we've, we've agreed so far that members of the various building threat assessment teams will include a sworn police officer. And I, I just want us to, if that's our, if that's what we've agreed to at this point, I would like us to be very open.
We haven't agreed to that, Charlie.
No, the, the threat assessment teams at the building level are made up with staff from the buildings. What we've talked about from a organizational effort on doing threat assessment effectively does need and require input from law enforcement. Because, you know, um, the, the conversation we're having here today is very relevant about when police involvement is overdone and when we're including police too frequently. Obviously, if we're also talking about mass shooter situations, we know there has to be an involvement of law enforcement into that conversation and how we respond and how our emergency plans go with that. That is one element of it. You know, the other element of it is trying to do prevention. And the prevention happens on the people closest to the student and have the relationships with the student and the risk factors we look for and the warning signs that may be presented or, or cries for help in trying to do some of those things. And so that's really what those building level care assessment teams look at or threat assessment teams are going to look at is how do we wrap around the student to get an accurate picture and catch some of those warning signs before we're now dealing with an active threat? Whether that's an actionalized threat or whether that's a verbalized threat or what that may be. And so the, the officers are not an active part of those building care assessment teams. Law enforcement would have input into how we do care assessment and when we get concerns, how that's handled. But that would be a part of our work as we go through. And I think what I'm hearing Kiki and the others say is, you know, how are we intentional again? And we've talked about this in our Equity efforts to that, that we're not overdoing it. You know, um, overdoing is probably simplified, how we're not over identifying, how we're not disproportionately calling officers through this threat assessment process on students of color. And that's where we've committed to you guys previously about bringing back the demographic data around those threat assessment teams and how we're handling those situations. So I think that's a commitment we just need to continue on and, and make sure that we, that we do as we approach the school year.
Also, Matt, a few meetings ago, probably early spring, we actually did fill this position. So just wanted to let everyone know that, that, that care assessment lead position has already been hired.
Does anyone else want to speak on that topic?
I, I do. So you're saying that you're trying to get training for, and input to figure out, to figure, to, um, for how to monitor or recognize or track the signs of a student in crisis so that you can figure out how to handle it before it becomes an actual crisis? And you're saying you are going to, you think that that means you need the input from law enforcement? Is that what was being stated?
Well, no, that was, um, that's kind of the, I guess, what I'm trying to state, Kiki, around the twofold nature of it. So part of it is on the prevention aspect. That I don't think is, is significant input from the law enforcement. But threat assessment is twofold, right? And so on the prevention aspect, where we're trying to make sure we're supporting kids and prevent more of these instances from ever occurring, that is on the front end of the care assessment. And that, that is where I was trying to make the point when Charlie asked a question about if law enforcement's part of that process, they're not. Those are building level teams supporting the kid, the adults and, and the people that have relationships with them. Intentional and some mental health and behavioral health challenges, things along that line. The law enforcement end comes on the backend or the second side of this where if we were dealing with an active crisis in our situation, we'd still need to have a plan for that. And there needs to be a plan of how we would handle that. And if we get a legitimate active threat, law enforcement would have to be called with other emergency management services potentially on that. So that's where their input is beneficial in the process on the front end, on the prevention side. I, I don't know if I made a better distinction there in, in the question. Okay.
You did. I understand that. Okay, then I guess those are some things like in deeper conversation we possibly could have more so. Another question that has arise is, is the person that you guys said that filled the seat, the coordinator for the threat assessment team or the lead, I don't know exactly how you want to have that title. Is that person with law enforcement in any way or are they not?
They're not with law enforcement in any way. They have had experience in law enforcement in the past. They also had experience in education. The, the second grant that we're applying for through this agency is going to fundamental, is hopefully going to fundamental health coordinator. If we're awarded that grant, it will also be kind of the key second player on the district level team. And to accommodate that, before we know if we have the grant or not, we're actually going to partner with, we hope to partner with United Action for Youth to use some of their services on the mental health end so that both are accounted for on the front end of this conversation. So that's where we really see the social work background coming in. We, we couldn't find somebody that really had both of those skill sets. When I said there's kind of the twofold side of the, of the threat assessment or care assessment issue. So we need to account for the social work end of it and the, the mental health end of it in one way. And then, uh, some additional training on the law enforcement end, potentially on a different, different avenue. And so the person is not currently affiliated with law enforcement. Now they're our employee. And like I said, they also had an education background. So we can, we can provide some more information. I don't have that person's credentials in front of me here today, but the, I can get that to the board again if you guys would like to see that again.
I would appreciate it as well. IFR would love to know those credentials as well. Because that will go into who we think is, if this, if this person's the leader, the head of this. That is essential to how we feel it's going to be taken care of. If this person is a proper representation of someone who can assess threats. For all backgrounds, more specifically for BIPOC backgrounds. So if that is able to be shared, we definitely request it.
Sure, so we'll work on that. And I, the one thing, and I know, you know, obviously, it it's hard to have trust in some of these conversations. And I think that's what we're hoping to do and to build with some more of this. I do think the threat assessment, the care assessment conversation in our district came from a place of not wanting to go the traditional routes. That you've seen large systems go around some of the traditional measures that happen in. And honestly, like I started the conversation with seeing some of the outcomes that happened for our students and knowing that wasn't good enough. And that there was also situations we probably weren't aware of that potentially we could have prevented in the past. And so we know though that spirit doesn't always match outcomes in systems. And so I think that's the work we have to commit to as we go throughout. And so we could, I I'm looking forward to, I think, continuing that conversation with you guys too. So we're making sure we're on the same page there.
Okay, well, with that, you know, with you saying you're looking forward to the conversation and I'm looking forward to the conversation that I'm willing to move forward next man.
It oughta happen then, right?
Yeah, it oughta happen.
All right.
Hey, Matt, I remember when we were talking about care assessment and hiring the coordinator. One of the points we made was that this was gonna be a person who needed to kind of be able to go out in the community. And so maybe I meet with groups like IFR. And so maybe that's somebody else who could be in the conversation is the. And meet the board as as well.
That's what I thought. I mean, I think that would be a good first step, right? And just being able to sit down with the person and talk about, you know, having them talk about their their path and what they hope to do. And just getting a face to face in that way. And so we haven't been able to do some of that, obviously, like I said, because of some of the COVID. But we know we're gonna have to start doing some of that in some fashion as we approach the the school year.
Can I jump in before we move on to the next topic? But it's been brought up to me by folks around our district. The number of schools that routinely have officers, you know, go through. You know, after school or before school or just in the middle of the day, just stop by. I think these are some of the stories that, you know, we've been asked to look into to really get a handle on when and why that is happening. Are there reasons for it? Or is, you know, who's making that decision and those types of things? So it has been brought up and other specifics are around, you know, sporting events. There's usually law enforcement around or other security also. I'm not really sure how it all plays out. So those are the things that have been brought up and we need to, you know, in response to kind of look into those numbers and and figure out what's going on there. So I just thought I'd add that to the conversation.
Thanks, Sean. I think that's a good thing. We we probably do have some data on that, I suspect. And it's a good thing for us to review it.
Yeah, that's something IFR is requesting. That's in our notes section. A public record should be kept of all the schools for tracking instances whenever the police are present regardless of the reason. So that we can see that kind of pattern and figure out why. Because essentially, we don't think they need to be there is what IFR is getting at specifically. We don't think they need to be there. And most of the time, there's a lot of people who are deeply uncomfortable or feel unsafe when they are there.
Yes, especially BIPOC students.
Yes, I agree. And I know a lot, a few coworkers who have loved ones who are police officers and may come in to visit. Or I've heard some stories about where police officers would come in to bring cupcakes in in their gear. So I would also recommend that if police officers are on campus. They should not have their gear on with no weapons.
So anything else to be said on that top, on that demand, on the second demand? Otherwise, we can move on. Okay. Moving on to the third demand, or not our third demand, that was our third demand, sorry. I mean, the second demand or fourth. Okay, an actively anti-racist curriculum that demonstrates a well-rounded and complete knowledge of Black history in the United States. We contend that this may be implemented through anti-racist personnel and hiring of diverse staff. That is qualified to do the work that is necessary for these changes to occur. The district response to that was to conduct a curriculum audit to ensure anti-racist K through 12 curriculum. As well as compliance with the district's CDEI plan. And A of the DEI goal, one through C, goal three through three C. Is audit, is to audit the current American studies courses to ensure anti-racist and culturally relevant concepts. And practices are woven through the throughout the course. And B, create a, create a required Black History course to be considered for adoption in the 2021 to 2020. Two thousand and twenty-two program of studies. And that was the district's response. And then the Equity Committee's response on curriculum is the immediate action is to remove racist instructional. Materials currently in the ICCSD classrooms. Especially like the fifth grade social, an example is the fifth grade social studies books, textbooks. And under the ICCSD Comprehensive DEI Plan, Goal Three, to create equitable, inclusive and supportive school environments. We recommend adding, adding the following critical tasks, Critical Task Number One. Adding proactive anti-racist curriculum at all grade levels. And Critical Task Number Two, adding a robust equity review process to all curriculum reviews. We had a few improvements and changes and questions on those. The first one being specific members contributing to the miseducation and trauma within the education of BIPOC history within the school district. Must step down and they must be held accountable for their choices and the harm they have caused. An improvement on on three A. From the district, I believe, is teacher accountability evaluations, lesson observations and consequences for those teachers. Also on three A, principals must con, I can't pronounce that word, I'm so sorry. And support in teaching anti-racist curriculum and hold them accountable. And then on the Critical Tasks, one and number three from the school board. It's who will be in charge of adding slash reviewing the anti-racist curriculum. D center the white gaze of all grade levels for for 2020 and 2021 school year. Make sure that these are paid professionals because they should be. And teachers must be qualified to teach the new curriculum, provide an educational course for all the teachers that, so that they are qualified to. And hold accountability for this education through teacher evaluation. And then on three and Critical Task Number Two, who will be a part of the Equity Review Process? Have it be culturally responsive BIPOC reps. And then a concern that we had is those who are a part of this must be culturally competent. And should not be those who are in current admin positions. Then another concern slash improvement we had was have the social justice class already in place and the future Black History Class to be required. To have a separate ethnic studies class discussing all the multiracial Americans and it be required. Take the current ninth grade history course and de-center the white gaze. Shift the focus to BIPOC history and voices for 2020 through 2021 school year. And then have the required Black History Class be year long versus a one trimester elective. Does anyone wanna speak on those?
So maybe in the Equity Review Process, you guys mentioned about them not being administrative positions. We're assuming, or I'm assuming, I guess, from reading that those staff members of color would be appropriate. To involve in a Equity Review Process from your perspective.
Uh, sorry, yes, staff members of color would be great for the Equity Review Process.
I'm sorry, I was completely muted that entire time. Essentially, within the review processes is making sure that it is qualified individuals. And India, like BIPOC individuals, essentially. We are finding that with current admin, they aren't, they are not qualified, which is why the request did not be admin that is part of that.
And that those positions would be paid positions, not just using the BIPOC staff members. Not just using our knowledge without us getting paid.
Yeah, for sure.
I think I understand what you're asking for there.
Does anyone else have any questions on our improvements and changes?
There's one in the chat.
Oh yeah, she said, in regards to the class, the Equity Committee has discussed the need for this class at the seventh grade level. Rather than waiting until high school education. So are we, so introducing the BIPOC history class to seventh grade level or the ethnic studies class?
Either way it goes, I think it's a great idea to start it early at any point because trust me, they're willing to retain that information at any time. Yeah, ethnic studies, but either way, yeah.
Yeah, but I, and I personally like the idea of starting it even earlier, pre-K. Of educating our students, cause maybe that could address some of the issues we see. When it's maybe what people think to be too late, that you don't want their brains to start forming already. These negative views, it it needs to start as early as we can introduce Black History. Or history focusing on others than the traditional white history that we all learn about. Because there's hundreds of stories and events that our kids, my kids included. Don't hear about until they either hear it at home or they're off at college or they're doing their own research. I don't wanna be that district. So that's just my two cents.
I completely agree on that, Rethina, because especially when we are talking about the fifth grades, uh, social studies textbooks. Of like Columbus and all that stuff, like they need to be taught that before they enter middle school, before they enter high school. So when they do, one, it's easier for them to pick up and two, they're not given false information.
And in regards to those, those textbooks that, I think those textbooks need to be just completely like swept out and re-altered. Because that white gaze is so heavily done, you don't really actually under, understand the full story that is happening, the full narrative. Which is helping perpetuate the cycle of the miseducation and the ignorance and essentially whitewashing. That is happening to students' minds, not realizing the true history. Cause this is, this is about Black and Indigenous studies, like not just the Black Americans, but also our Indigenous Americans.
This is Melanie. I have a question that probably for Matt. Do you know when the new social studies curriculum is up for review?
I don't know the the specific timeline. I don't know if anybody else on the team knows when that would be. I I don't think it's soon was my my last thought on that. And so that would be one that based off your ask fours here and demands that we would need to revisit, right? That we would revisit that cycle. Amy, do you happen to know?
Yeah, I think it might be math, Melanie, next, actually. And we've elongate that cycle because of the budget situation. And so instead of a typical seven and eight year cycle, I think it's been stretched out to nine or 10. And then because of the comprehensive nature and the cost associated with K-12 purchase for ELA or math, that's been broken out to two years. So it's definitely something I think we, our team needs to go back and discuss about whether we can flip flop. Cause I think social studies was supposed to come after math, that we can definitely be talking about that.
There's also, oh, sorry. I was talking about that. Oh, okay, you go ahead.
There's also someone in the chat that says.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I I realized we were probably saying the same thing. But from a teacher's standpoint, how would that align with the required teaching standards and fit into required hours that students must complete each year? There are no standards, to my knowledge, that require school districts to teach those things in regards to the curriculum that we're saying need to implement. It feels, it feels beyond the district level to mandate some of those changes. Not that we shouldn't, but if, but it may be something to think about and take into consideration. Also, ideas such associations was raised or developed by elementary school. So, so from the end of that, it sounds like they're reinstating that, yes, we should start doing some of this stuff in elementary school. Because a lot of those ideas and stuff are already solidified by then. As regard to, or in in response to the question of like, is this beyond district? Is this beyond school board to try to do this because of the requirements that is already set? I now, I'm also curious with that question too, this person has been up with. Is this something that we can implement and do or is this something we need to bring to another board or another like?
Um, I believe there is quite a lot we can do here at the local level. Multicultural, as Laura put in the chat, you know, multicultural gender fair practices are already required by law. We just don't do a good enough job of it. I think that I agree with all of this. I think even, you know, before we do curriculum review, I think all of our teachers can start reflecting. And and learning about what white gaze is. Again, we do want teachers presenting this material in appropriate ways because it can be presented in in harmful ways. So we wanna make sure we have that training, but I think that work can begin right away. And then also, I agree, pre-K, I mean, really this, and it's not just history, right? That's a component of it. It's also just well, how people get along, sociology and history is a big piece of it. So starting in pre-K and really infusing this into all of our curriculum. And having a specific course on Black History and Ethnic Studies, you know. And I agree too that those kind, you know, I I wanna say to have a required course, that's just not enough for me. Because that's one course, you require people to take it. But if they're in ninth grade or even seventh grade, it's a little late, I think, to to change some attitudes. So we really have to require, and the law says we have to require multicultural gender fair practices, K-12. And I think we just need to do a better job at enforcing that and holding people accountable to actually doing that.
Well, that's amazing to hear because it sounds like we are on the same page of what we do need. So now it's more of like, how do we implement it and to like what degree and how much at what point in time, like create that timeline? Oh, that makes me happy.
I wanna speak, if if okay, to the point about the the staff stepping down. For the harm that was caused in a professional development earlier this year. And I know, and that kind of speaks kind of to what I was saying in regards to who would teach the course. You know, if 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 the plan is to implement the those changes in the curriculum, like like the specific ones around Black History, right? If if the expectation that happened next year, that would give us a year to train effectively all staff, K-12. To be able to do that delivery in a way that wouldn't be harmful. Because I learned that even people who are super professional around it, like, you know, we had teaching tolerance come in. And that that landed very harmful. So I can't, you know, not take some ownership for that being a part of the. The 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 cabinet, you know what I'm saying, and knowing that it was coming and not maybe asking the right questions. But how do you, how do you prepare a whole district to do it in a way? That where we're not gonna shake our heads at the end and be like, that was worse than us even ever bringing it up. Because I don't, I mean, racial trauma is real. And if people are mandated to do something and they don't understand why and or they don't have enough empathy. Around it and or they, you know, don't feel like it's necessary or might even in their hearts be. And and like disagreeing with some of the the pieces around it. Let's keep it real, right? How the, how can they deliver that effectively and their bias not show? You get what I'm saying? So how could we prepare an entire district to go forth with such an undertaking? I think it's the right thing to do, but I'm, the timeline makes me very nervous. And also, I'm just hoping that at some point we can figure out how to to mediate between what, you know, the folks that were involved. At district office and people who were harmed. Because like I I know that that was a huge lesson for us going forward, but I don't know about removing people because of it. Like that makes me very uncomfortable.
Hey Laura, I I wonder, or or anybody, are there, could we find some examples of of maybe places where this is being done well? And find a way to highlight some of the work that folks are doing that that. And find a way to highlight some of the work that folks are doing that that is good and and maybe highlight some individuals. Just to, to, you know, because I think some teachers, if even if you want to do it, you may not know how and they may, it may help to say like. You know, here's an example, here's a way it can be done, you know, just as a way to get started because it probably is happening well in some pockets, some places. And so I wonder if we could highlight some of that and again, not to say we're, look at the great job we're doing. But to show folks who really don't know what to do and maybe want some tools, some examples.
We might be able to find buildings, you get what I'm saying, who have uh, come together in in various districts to do it. I I will be super surprised if we could find an entire district who could do it with fidelity. And and because people are at different places on the continuum when it comes to cultural proficiency, right? So you could be, you know, it it show up inappropriately with one area of diversity over another. And can you, the question I always ask the cultural proficiency team is, can you wholeheartedly support? Students in one area of diversity that yours, that you show up super low in on the the cultural proficiency continuum? So like if it's race, and and you know you have issues around race, you know you have bias. You know that you have, you know, historical things that were handed down that you haven't worked through or you're not willing to. Can you turn around and deliver the content in a way that will not be harmful? I don't know the answer to that, but my guess is no. And so, you know, we're dealing with something even bigger than just here, do this content. Because as soon as a teacher shows up, un, you know, like unapologetically not interested and or, you know, kids are super receptive. So as soon as they can can, you know, feel or sense that you want to be somewhere else, it's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be harm caused. And so like all of that um, has to be, you know, taken into consideration.
And I think um, that can go back to the the notes, questions and and improve improvement section. Done by um, the IFR where we thinking that there can, there needs to be like a teacher review process or evaluation process for a whole accountability. When we start implementing this curriculum and how it take transforms, that there needs to be, like we were talking about, like if that is a year long of educating them. And getting them a part of like how we're going to change this curriculum. Maybe it's also with like models to show them like, this is some ways that work, this is some ways I don't. But also maybe it's also getting students to review like what um, alumni students have passed Iowa. And maybe current student, giving their own uh, testimony, telling them like truthfully, this is what I actually learned in these classes. This is what I wish I had learned. This is what I felt um, was offensive to learn. And and that way so that we can have that uh, that honest review process. So that we know how we can formulate this for uh, future curriculums. And then also hold that people accountable for those teachers that you described that might just have these biases that they don't maybe have. They'll have no idea until you force them to have to learn some things they didn't have to really care about because it wasn't in their window of perspective. And then have to then start teaching it and they don't need to or want to or whatever, that both students and teachers can hold them accountable. If that address, they like have that kind of. Process.
Well, I think the first thing we have to do is and say, is say, this is what we are about and what we believe in, right? So we set the expectation about this is what we're about and this is what we believe in to folks. And then we look for those examples, non-examples and and we, we develop a plan for for how we do it. I mean, I think Laura is speaking knowledgeably about the fact about, you know, turning a whole district in comparison to one building that does it really well. But we also have to recognize the immense amount of urgency that the work needs to to have and that it has to begin and it has to start somewhere. And so I think considering all those things, it's incumbent upon us to look at, well, then how do we step into this? And in a, in a very thoughtful and deliberate fashion so that we don't do harm, but that we also recognize at the same time that it has to get started and. And that we have to recognize this is an expectation of how we're going to do business and how we're going to teach and how it is. And so like even that standards conversation we're having before, I really think it's more of the how on some of these things. There is an element of what, of course, about what exactly is taught. We need to adhere to standards set to us, but there, there's a big part of the how, and I think that's what you guys zoned in on here. Around how we teach those things and the lens that it's taught from and and those important components. And so, you know, I think we can come back and and look at where, where are those opportunities to start? There was a couple of things referenced there around those classes and I think a lot of you guys said too, well, class is only a step, right? There, it needs to happen sooner, it needs to happen earlier. Those staff need time to be prepared and to know that what the expectation in front of them is to be able to do that. And um, so, you know, I feel like there, there's avenues for us to begin that work. And I I do think you guys have talked about the balance between having the urgency around it and then also setting the expectation for. Um, not wanting to hurt people while we do it either and and making sure those expectations are clear, so.
Yeah, I wanted to add one more thing. It's, yes, we are always going to have a problem. There's always going to be some teachers that don't completely understand how they should teach to certain type of kids, how they should teach the curriculum, but. And yes, having teachers teach it in the correct way is very important, but we also need to get it out there because. Me still being in high school, just finished um, the ninth grade course two years ago. I, I do remember that, yes, the teacher was very excited about things that they related to. But me still having that material in front of me gave me the opportunity to look into that stuff further by myself. And especially um, opening up this um, BIPOC history to the white kids that haven't had to go and learn about this themselves. That is also very important. So then they, if they are interested, even if they're not, they're still forced to learn this material on their own. I don't know if that makes complete sense, but just at least having it in front of them is gonna make a difference in general.
You know, this is one where I know as a board member, I appreciate the student voice a great deal. Um, and especially like Kiki said, past students. And and I don't know if there's a way to kind of gather some of that information, but but. I would like to see that kind of what opinions were of what kids learned and what, you know, they wish they had learned and that would be really helpful.
Okay, is there, does anybody else want to speak on the fourth demand topic? Otherwise, I think it would be in our best interest to move on to number five. Okay, um, our fifth demand. Oh, I accidentally closed out of it. One second, Chris. Okay, so our fifth demand. Create an equity team slash community, involve task force to rewrite the ICCSD discipline protocol. So that is free of language and behaviors that target students of colors. Draft a document that includes a culturally responsive tier of consequences. Create a tiered list of consequences that can be recommended to hold schools accountable for the overrepresentation of African Americans. Receiving office referrals and suspensions. The district response on that one was to conduct an audit. An audit of current discipline protocols and procedures created by Georgetown Committee. To review for a language or practices that may target students of color as well as reviewing law enforcement involvement and student discipline. And then um, the DEI goal two or two A. From the district response is include rest restorative, restorative practices into current protocols and processes. And then the Equity Committee response under discipline is the immediate action. We recommend prioritizing DEI Action Plan Two, culturally responsive policies and practices related to student behavior and discipline. By immediately updating the DPP, Discipline Policies and Procedure Binder. Two years ago, this committee surfaced the critical need to update DPP. This task is key to improving the climate and equity. We also recommend adding the following critical tasks under the DEI Plan Goal Two. Critical tasks, number one, implement discipline protocols that are culturally com- competent through collab. Collaboration with a diverse committee, committee of stakeholders or stakeholders, stakeholders, I'm so sorry. And then critical task number two, implement rest restorative practices district, district wide through updates. To the deep DDP and all staff training. And then under the mental and emotional health, um, their immediate action is to increase funding for school councils and social workers. Under the ICCSD Comprehensive DEI Plan, Goal Three, to create equitable, inclusive and supportive school environments. We recommend adding the following critical tasks. Critical task number three, adopt rest- rest- restorative. Practices in all buildings. And then critical task number four, adopt social emotional learning, SEL. Curricula and strategies for all grade levels that are tied to standards from the Iowa Department of Education. Including requiring a multi-disc- disciplinary CE SEL. Or the social emotional learning team at all buildings. Then we had just a few improvements or questions and changes on those. And um, under the discipline one, the person or persons who created the DPP binder must release a statement. Taking accountability of the binder not being effective and being racist. We need the opportunity to fully and independently change the DPP binder. Um, and then discipline protocol binder must be public as well. The IFR must review any of these changes. And then under critical task number one, principal and teacher accountability, schools must track the number of minutes students are out of the classroom. Certain previous discipl- disciplinary acts involved remove the students from the class which prevents students from learning or continuing their education. There needs to be ways of disciplining the students that doesn't use their education as an ultimatum. Critical task number three. Or referring to critical task number three, specify what the restorative practices look like. Um, trauma-informed practices in addition to culturally competent practices. You guys have any questions on those? Or comments, whatever.
I guess Matt, I just ask what, you know, what would be um. Where are we at with kind of looking at the DPP? And 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 I think specifically, uh, obviously the racist reference is very important to to clean up the language. But then how do we, you know, get those restorative practices in there? Because I think we've seen a lot of, um, a lot of evidence of those working a lot better than the old, the old um, model.
Yeah, and so this one's tough because, you know, we definitely don't want to be in a position of um. Explaining or justifying, uh, but I do think the background on how the current discipline protocols and procedures evolved to the district. Was important to note from putting in that Georgetown note there that that was not something the district did on their own. I do think what you guys are obviously communicating is there's a need to go back and do that review again, right? That at one time it was created with a multi-stakeholder group um, from a, um, that did have um, BIPOC members as part of that committee. Uh, that looked at that initially and that presented that to the district and that it was approved. Um, obviously, we still have disproportionate discipline happening in the district, uh, which is reason enough to look at what we have for. Uh, discipline protocols and procedures. And also, as you guys have mentioned a few different times, to look at the law enforcement involvement in those protocols and procedures. And the inclusion of restorative practices. And so, I mean, I still think those are all key pieces uh, to work on. Um, but I do think in um, in some way, you know, we'd want to note about where where those came to the district from. I, you know, you talk about those being public, I I, I don't agree or don't disagree with that at all. I mean, there's no reason those shouldn't be transparent, those shouldn't be open, uh, shared out about how how we use to. Uh, try to evaluate those different circumstances and that's the only way we could build trust with law enforcement involvement. Around that for people to know about when and in what situations we do do that and what kind of consequences we have in place for uh, for certain actions. And so I think the best thing I could say is, you know, I I think that's why you saw in our, our district response initially to that conversation. About doing that current audit of those, looking where students uh, uh, language or practices that may target students of color. Reviewing that law enforcement piece and then seeing your, um, you know, further statements here. Uh, tonight about, um, you know, looking at at those other ways, I I see a mention about trauma-informed practice. I'm trying to look through your list here again as I was talking. So, um, I just think it's work that needs to happen. Uh, it's just, you know, some work we need to do inside the system to continue to review those protocols and procedures. And take another look and make sure the right people are included in that conversation. I think that's another thing. We'd want to make sure to to recognize and that I'm hearing from you guys too, is that there's the appropriate people around the table and an appropriate representation. In that conversation so that it's not something that's done to a group of people or to um, stakeholders in our community. That it's, that it is that multi-stakeholder, stakeholder uh, group coming around the table to look at that.
Yeah.
Hi, can I add something? Sorry. And I'm a member of the Georgetown Committee that Matt's referring to. Um, he and I will have to um, agree, disagree about our, our particular reflections about where the binder came from. There were a lot of discussions with uh, that involved members of the Georgetown Committee about the importance of having. An objective evaluation process for punishments that didn't result in disparate um, discipline. There were also specific programs created to respond. Um, reasons why were involved at school such as disorderly conduct. Um, I do not think that we successfully advocated for um, a racially just um, binder. At the end of the day, um, at a certain point, we had a lot of really tough conversations. Um, we had a lot of um, people who felt defensive about how they had been practicing discipline in their schools. Um, I can't say that I was there all the way for the end of that discussion because at a certain point, although I was a member of the Georgetown Committee. I no longer received invitations to participate in those discussions. So, um, while I I do think it's an effort made to look at the racial impact of our discipline procedures. I do not believe that there was a committee um, that really um, was focused on racial justice. That fully signed off on all the contents of the binder.
Thank you.
That's fair, you know, I mean, I I certainly appreciate and understand your perspective there, Sarah. Um, I would have been a building administrator about at the time that work was concluding. And so, uh, having some additional background on on people's perspective around um, how those protocols and procedures came. You know, I knew some of the substance of the committee and some of the background on that work, so. Appreciate you uh, being able to share your experience uh, through that and obviously some of the work we still have in front of us to do too.
And I I also want to reiterate when it comes to looking over the, the um, DPP binder. And just disciplinary procedures and protocols in general, that it's not just the the things that seem to be blatantly racist. Disciplinary actions or like statements inside the binder, but almost, not almost, the binder entirely. Because schools were following it to T, some of them weren't, but the entire binder just did not seem adequate to. Do um, an efficient way. An efficient way of actually disciplining children that is beneficial to them both themselves and their actual education. In regards to just examples of sometimes teachers would within disciplining a student in class, remove them from the classroom. But not take them to like an office or an area where they would, I don't know, be stimulated in some kind of way. Which refers to the, the section of the demands in that there needs to be ways of disciplining the students that doesn't use their education as an ultimatum. Because you shouldn't have a punishment be, let's take away your source of education. Because essentially we need to keep educating these kids and find different ways of um, getting their attention when they do not have it. So I, it's not just like certain sections of the binder that we need to review, it's the whole binder, the whole thing. I just want to clarify that.
Also with the ultimatum thing, uh, most of the time it's either go sit outside or go to the office or go to SAQ or go, or SAQ, I'm sorry. Um, go to the SAQ, I think, uh, I'm not, the SAC, whatever it's called, or go to the office or go sit outside. Um, and also, like, I get that when you're in middle school and high school, we also have to remember that if a student, SAC, thank you. Um, in high school, like, yes, there's times when students don't participate at all, but high school students are also, most of them are. Sixteen, seventeen year olds, fifteen year olds, they do have, they have the mind that if they want to participate in the conversation. Or if they don't, I think that you should just let them be, like, they shouldn't have to go to the office or sit outside because they don't feel like it that day. And I feel like that's where a lot of teachers target students of color because. They'll see them acting up or talking or something and send them to the office, send them outside, especially outside. And that's where they lose their education and don't want to participate anymore. Is there anything else to be spoken on our fifth demand or? Or the improvements we've made on the fifth demand?
I don't think so. I mean, it's clear for me what's being asked. So if you wanted to go on, I think. The rest of us are willing to listen to the sixth demand.
Okay, great. I'll move on to that one. So um, the sixth demand for the school board is to provide mental and financial support to support. Recruit and retain teachers, administrators and school board members of color. Um, the district response on that one was to update and present plan to recruit, entertain teachers and administrators of color. Including a focus on it, on the Grow Your Own program. And um, if you guys are familiar with that. And if you guys are familiar with that, and then ensure the teachers and administrators of color are assigned a mentor that best fits their identified needs and desires, diversity, content area, and grade level. The equity committee response under personnel is the immediate action A, begin tracking retention rates of teachers and administrators of color. Immediate action B, conduct exit interviews with all teachers and administrators of color who leave the district, focusing on the employees' experience with the cultural climate around race to help determine if that impacted their decision to leave, and to help guide retention policies moving forward. Immediate action C, provide a protocol for reporting issues with other staff, including supervisors. That, that provides due, that provides due process yet discourages a culture of retaliation. And then under the I C C S D comprehensive D E I plan, goal four, to attain diverse and culturally proficient teachers, administrators, and staff. We recommend adding the following critical tasks. Critical task number one, develop and commit to strategies for hiring and supporting teachers slash administrators of color to meet or exceed the D E I P goals. Critical task number two, build D E I competencies in teachers and administrator annual goals and performance reviews for added accountability in accordance with the Iowa standards for school leaders and Iowa model educator evaluation system. And then critical task number three, extend cultural competency training to all staff, and then provide ongoing reflection and coaching on information, implementation within classrooms and buildings. And then our improvements, changes, and questions on those were, on number eight, under the district response, specific financial commitment to the Grow Your Own program. What is the status of the Grow Your Own program? Who is part of this, who is a part of this program? Who oversees the program and who can be a part of the program? Who is the Grow Your Own program specifically for? And how will this be executed efficiently and effectively? Then on A A, on A A, which is also under the district response, this is our reply, mentoring needs to be culturally supportive. I C C S D, create a network of teachers of color across the state. And then title two, funding, and what is the title two, funding and logistics? And then on the critical task number two, from the equity, I think it's equity, yeah, the equity committee response, who is on the team to write that evaluation for teachers? And then Director of Diversity and Cultural responsiveness must review this, and there are not administrators qualified to do this work currently, is our statement. Does anyone want to speak on that topic?
What do you mean must? Y'all bossing me around?
Sorry, one second. Could you please review it? Could you please review it?
Chase, can you speak to the Grow Your Own program and what you've got going on?
Sure. My name is Chase Ramey. And so, thanks for letting us join the conversation this evening. And first, I'd like to say that I think we're supportive of increasing the, the diversity of our staff, both of teachers and our administrators across the board. And so, very supportive of us continuing to take steps to do that. Our Grow the Own program and answer your questions actually is multi-pronged. We have one strand that is focused on individuals that currently serve in the district and support staff roles such as parent.
I hate to interrupt, but could you explain the Grow Your Own program for the viewers that are listening? And for anyone else on the panel unless they don't understand it?
Sure. So the Grow Your Own program is designed, there's four different pieces of it. And so by Grow Your Own, a big part of it is focused on our internal, internal staff members. And so the first strand of that is a way that we would look at support employees right now, parents, or other individuals in the organization that would like to become teachers. And looking at ways that we can assist both financially, and by providing employment after they're done obtaining a teaching degree to continue to work in the school district. Similar to that, but one that is another plank is focused on our students. And so we would look at students that would like to become teachers. Part of that beginning when they're in high school still to expose them to the teaching profession. And then again, provide financial assistance and other support while they're in college, to then hopefully come back to Iowa City Community School District and, and be teachers. We also have a plank that we're developing for individuals that are in other professions, that are in the Iowa City community, that want to join the community, the organization as teachers. And so again, providing that support to, to move them through. And then the fourth one that we're developing out is for teachers and other employees that would like to become administrators, to again, grow our own folks inside the organization, to take on different, different positions inside the Iowa City Community School District, with a focus on providing more opportunities for staff of color or other individuals in the community that would like to be part of the Iowa City Community School District organization.
Chase, if you don't mind, I'd add a couple more details for us. Hi, I'm Nick Proud. I serve as the interim director of talent and human resources for the district, and I helped work with Chase and Jeremy on a lot of our work related to Grow Your Own and bringing in teachers to the district. Within those prongs, I just want to mention, we have some great partnerships that we've begun to develop with the Kirkwood Regional Center as part of our plan with our students. The University of Iowa, one thing that we've identified is people are at various points in their opportunities to become, to move forward in their degree. They may have a degree, they may be far away from a degree, they may need different support. So we're working with Iowa right now, we have a committee together that Debbie Bennett and Megan Clark joined me on to look at alternative licensure and alternative credits, help people earn their elementary degree or special ed degree in a different path, because there's barriers even at the University of Iowa for people to be able to have access to the educational programming. So we're working with our partners, we also started a partnership with Mount Mercy University of Cedar Rapids to look at some alternative ways for people to be able to, that one's looking more towards some of our support staff and finding ways that they can continue to work while earning those degrees. So I think there's many pieces and great progress that we're making towards that goal, but something that we continue to prioritize in, in our hiring practices.
Thank you for clarifying that, because essentially with I F R, we were intrigued by the Grow Your Own program because we, we, we learned what it was and we want to know even more because like that is something that is direct in line with our, I'm so sorry, with our sixth demand. So that's where we were like, okay, we want to know more information, especially when the district response brought it up. We're like, okay, so if this is implemented, this is in place, how far and what can we, and can we pretty, essentially work together so we can make this sixth demand come to life?
One thing I did, we ran into a few roadblocks this spring. We had an event set up for a number of our students to get to go visit some education classes. They were students of color to visit education classes at the University of Iowa, then connect them with the Kirkwood Regional Center. But right before the visit was supposed to happen is when the university shut down their classes and we couldn't have that experience. But I think that's something we're looking forward to in the future of showing students what an opportunity is and encouraging people to become educators. I think that's one of the most important conversations we can have with, with kids. I'm a former elementary principal, having that conversation early on of, hey, you're a great leader, you could be a great educator within our system, and, and beginning that conversation with our students.
Maybe we have a few future educators on, on the Zoom meeting tonight.
Not sure about that, not sure about that, but.
Work with kids, but thank you.
So do we already have a, would we already have a team in place to write the evaluation for teachers? Or would that be something under the Director of Diversity and Cultural responsiveness?
Yeah, we, we would work with a, a team to develop that, that standard for administrators and for teachers. And so we would form a team there and can see from your demands about who you'd like to see be part of that. And so, I definitely think we could, we could pull some teams together to work on, on that component.
So is that something that we can actually accomplish earlier in this year with, with the COVID work we're having to do?
I don't know. I don't want to necessarily promise a timeline before we'd engage with the association around implementation of, of that standard and with our administrators, but it seems to be before we would start doing new evaluations. And for the next school year, it would be nice to do that, Charlie. And so I think we could provide some updates on that just as soon as we begin those conversations, if that's what the board would like to see us do.
Well, I'm at least one board member that thinks that this is a vital part of what we're trying to do in terms of changing our learning and teaching for students of color in the district.
Sorry, I don't know if somebody's trying to talk there or not. It seemed like something was coming through, but.
Is there any more concerns on our improvements?
Yolanda, I see your question in the, in the chat. And as Nico alluded to, we're, we're still getting it off the ground. We have surveyed our support staff, and so we have some numbers around interest, and it's very high. We also just signed off on a potential grant opportunity with the University of Iowa to look at putting that, the first class in place here within the next two semesters. So those pieces are moving. We, we haven't taken applications for the Grow Your Own program yet, simply because we need to solidify some of the pieces around the funding. But we anticipate that when we're fully up and going, each strand that I mentioned could have up to ten individuals in it per year is really what we see is something that we could support. And so that's our goal, is to get to ten in each one of those categories, especially with a focus on support staff that want to become teachers and also our students that want to become teachers. We think the, as, as Kiki mentioned, I mean, we think that's a, that's a great way for us to, to continue what we're doing. People that are already invested in our school district and, and want to continue to, to be here as part of Iowa City.
I, I get questions all the time, and so maybe there could be clarification. Because some people think that Grow Your Own is all for people of color. That's not correct. Isn't that, that right, right? It's for anyone, right?
Anyone can apply, yes. I don't think that we've been shy or bashful about the fact that our goal is to add more diversity to our, to our teacher ranks and that we believe that the Grow Your Own programs are a good way for us to do that. But you're right, Laura, it is, it is open to, to anyone that, that would like to apply.
That is something we did not understand. I, I F R side, I thought we assumed that Grow Your Own program was a, a way for BIPOC students, both in college or in high school, to have a way to get resources to provide them to completely get into the education program, so since to what you said, but just or exclusively to BIPOC people.
It, it is a way to get resources. Sorry, Kiki, you cut up a little bit, but no, it's, it's not, it's not 100% exclusive. But I, I can, you know, say, and, and again, you know, commit that that is, that is one of our goals, is that it would be for our students and staff of color to, to be provided the support they need to become teachers. And so, it would, it is.
That's the reason for the program, right, Jason? And that's why we're doing it, is essentially, yeah.
I thought I could just say something really quickly. I think it's important that if this is a goal, that this is not just like, we don't, we don't need another goal. If this is actually what the district wants to do, I think it's important that wording be created to prove that this is exactly what the district wants to do, that there needs to be a written statement or change the wording in terms of what the committee is like, the purpose of it is, or the purpose of the Grow Your Own program to actually align with having BIPOC students, you know, become, you know, teachers in this program. So I think we, if that's what the district wants to do, and if that's your goal, you should make that your goal.
Is because that, because that's essentially what this demand is referring to. So the district response is saying, their response to our sixth command, which is provide mental, financial support to support, recruit, and retain teachers, administrators, and school board members of color, is that the Grow Your Own program is, including a focus, is like the update and present plan to recruit and retain teachers and administrators of color, including a focus on the Grow Your Own program. If we want to include that focus in this program, and the program is not solely on BIPOC teachers and administrators of color, then we either, like, it seems like a waste of time to try to create a whole new program. But there, I would have to second what Renina's saying, is that then we need to emphasize and make that fully the goal. Because essentially, there are already enough resources to recruit teachers that aren't BIPOC. We need the resources to help recruit and support and, and retain, and very much emphasize on retaining our teachers of BIPOC through, through this committee. Because that's, that's where we need the most help. Like, people are commenting and talking to us that we need more support in that specifically because there, right now, it doesn't seem to be any, especially with the ones currently working in the district. So if you guys, if you're not, if you're not willing to make that your goal, then I, I say to the district, Grow Your Own program is not a response to the sixth demand, we need to find a new response.
No, I, 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 sorry, I'm trying to, I'm struggling for my words here right now. But no, we do, we are committed to that. And, you know, I appreciate that feedback, and we can work on the language around that. The district does feel that Grow Your Own will have significant benefits in the area of increasing our teachers of color. And it's, admittedly, it's still in the infant stages. And so the feedback about how we can better message that or make the focus concrete and visible and transparent, absolutely understand that and appreciate that. And we can incorporate that into the language and the work around that as we move it forward.
Okay, because that, that is what we would like to emphasize. That is the whole issue here.
Language emphasizing BIPOC, BIPOC peoples in this hiring process of Grow Your Own. That's very, very critical, if that's what the goal of this program is supposed to be.
Yeah, because there are current teachers in district who don't feel that they have that support, or, or, or that resource. And then there are people who are trying, who are BIPOC students or aspiring teachers and administrators, learning in both higher education and then K through 12, that feel like they don't know where those resources are because it's not provided to them. So emphasis on that and language on that is very, very important. Because that's how we're going to get our BIPOC teachers to then be able to implement these new curriculums that we're talking about, to then diversify our schools, to then fully make them equitable and equal for everyone. So it is a safe and true space for full education so that the people that are coming out of these schools are fully equipped to handle truly the world. Because essentially, a lot of alum don't feel like they had the right, the right card or the right delivery from their school to handle the things that are happening in the world. And I know that's like a big thing to chew, and that's a long-term type of situation, but we got to start with our administrators and our teachers.
For sure. You know, I think that's, like you guys said, if the goal of the program is that, then how are we intentionally stating that that's what it is? Because that is the primary driver for the Grow Your Own program. And so if that's the primary driver, then we need to call it what it is and, and make sure that we're identifying it that way. So certainly supportive of that.
And then there was another question in the chat saying, have the requirements been vetted to make sure that it doesn't negatively impact BIPOC? I'm assuming they're, they're referring to still Grow Your Own project. Yolanda, are you still referring to Grow Your Own program? I mean, I'm so sorry. Or are you referring to something? Yep, you are. So are there requirements being invited to make sure that it does negatively impact BIPOC in the sense of?
Well, Yolanda, do you want to come in and explain it more deeply so I don't?
Well, Yolanda, do you wanna come in and explain it more deeply? So I don't misinterpret this. I think I have an idea what you're saying, but I don't wanna say it wrong.
Uh, I think Yolanda was supposed to be on this side as a panelist. Kim, is there any way for you to give her a mic so she'll be able to talk with us?
If she laces her hand, I think you can.
There she is.
Okay, there she is.
Be able to, there she goes.
You just have to unmute.
I just wanna, I, yes, I just wanna make sure that the, uh, question, the requirements have been vetted because we wanna make sure that BIPOC people are in, in that in that small group that you're going to be bringing in. And so sometimes questions, requirements are not fair or equitable. And so making sure that the questions are, are vetted. Does that make sense?
So the, um, so like the, so like the, the application and the selection process, Yolanda?
Yes, correct.
Okay, yes, that, that makes sense, yes.
So has it been previously, or are you saying that you're going to look into it now? Is that for you or Nick?
I mean, either, either one of us, but I think it goes to the, the earlier, the earlier question about the intentionality and the goals of, of the program. And so knowing that those are the goals, that, I guess that's why I'm struggling with the question a little bit. Sorry, sorry, Yolanda, knowing the the purpose behind it and, and and what we see as the the, what we see is the purpose of, of the program and who we believe, you know, we would like to be in the program. I, I'm having trouble squaring, squaring the question with that since kind of we just came to that idea about being more transparent about it being about increasing teachers of, of color in the organization.
And Yolanda, I could speak to the, I, I think in some cases, I don't know that we're necessarily making selections to who may be involved. I think that a lot of it is just the interest that has been, if I think about some scenarios with some of our current support staff or paraprofessionals, it was based off of their interest of wanting to be involved and then us connecting with them, sitting down with them and then helping understand their story and better understanding how we could then support them. I did, I spent a number of times meeting with people because each person has a little different story and what's gonna help them in getting to that eventual goal of, you know, if you're a currently a paraprofessional, for example, and you'd like to be a special ed teacher and maybe a behavior classroom or a level two special ed teacher. That's a little different route than someone who wants to be in an elementary teacher. So at this point, it's a lot about gauging interest and then seeing how we can help them get now on a path to get to the goal that they're setting out. So I don't know that we're necessarily vetting or screening as much as we're kind of recruiting and following up on interest.
Well, I mean, also recruiting and following up on interest also needs to be, we need to vet that to make sure that you know, that you're doing the best that you can to understand their goals, their experiences and not providing roadblocks based on biases, stereotypes and what have you. And so if there's a small number of people that can get into the program, you have to make sure that it is fair and equitable in the first place. If you have limited amount of spots and who's picking. And so that's what I'm saying is that are you committed to making sure that when you're doing this picking, who's doing the picking?
And Nick, I would follow up with that. I, I think like an example could be when you say we rely on people to self-select into the program. I think that our white teachers of color have much better mentoring in place now. Where a white teacher can see themselves or white para can see themselves advancing because of these structural mentorship that they have. And we may not have our BIOPIC paras or students in a position that they would affirmatively self-select. And so to kind of dismantle that and say, hey, maybe instead of everyone can self-select, we will affirmatively reach out to BIOPIC people that could qualify for the program and, and see if we can actively bring them in. I, I think it's like an example structural barrier that we would wanna make sure isn't in place with the program.
Thank you Lisa. And I think we've tried to do that with, um, kind of that survey result, but I think that's a good clarification for us.
So any more discussion that wants to be made? On demand six? Okay, our seventh demand empower the district equity committee to hear complaints of racial bias from students and staff with tiered levels of consequences. Allow this group to make recommendations to the board for consequences to founded racial harassment claims. The district response on demand seven was one, commit to adding an evaluation standard for all employees and valuations speci- specifically addressing D E I goal three to three A, three B, three D and three E, goal four, and then goal four through four C. A culturally proficient and responsive practices and B fair and equitable treatment to students, families, colleagues and supervisors. Two, sustained commitment to staff professional development in the areas of restorative restorative, restorative, I'm sorry, practices, cultural proficiency and culturally responsive teaching and equity. Which is the D E I goal three through three A, three B, three D, three E, and then goal four to four C. Seven, create a district ombudsman position to help students, families and staff navigate and report racial bias concerns and complaints, complaints. And then nine, quarterly report delivered, quarterly reports delivered to the board of diversity, equity and in inclusion plan. A presented with data and metrics on progress towards goals. And that was the district response and then the equity committee response under ICC SD Equity Department. Their immediate action would be to fully support the ICC SD Equity Department by retaining the Equity Program Facilitator position. This position has been a critical part of developing and implementing the D E I plan. And funds should be found to retain this position. Our improvements slash changes slash questions was one who will be creating this evaluation standard. BIPOC, BIPOC staff, staff needs to be a part of this. And then our response to one A, define culturally proficient and cultural practices. And then get guidance from the Director of Diversity and Cultural responsiveness to help define these terms. Our response to seven, number seven from the district response was to specify who the student reports to. These reports for students speaking up against racial racist incidents by faculty and staff. Any and all incidents that happen from peer to peer can slash should be handled with a counselor. What is this, um, what is the system? What does ombudsman truly mean? Rather it be a hotline or a committee, a BIPOC student slash, um, union and group should also be formed. Supervised by a BIPOC paid faculty member. Have a record of reports given to be filed physically and publicly. Have a system in place to review the reports and make sure action has been taken. If not, have a tiered level of consequences in place. There needs to be a tiered level of consequences in regards to racist allegations to faculty. What would it look like? Termination should be one of the consequences. And then make sure whatever the tiered level of consequences are, that they are equitable to all faculty and staff, no matter their identities. This refers, this refers back to demand six and attaining the BIPOC in the district. And then one A from the Equity Committee Response, there needs to be funding to have more than one person a part of implementing the D E I plan with the Equity Committee. Equity Department, my bad. So anyone wanna speak on that topic?
I just wanted to clarify something real quick. On your guys' documents, you'll see that some things are highlighted in the reddish pink. That is things that as I F R was going through, looking through responses, um, completely agreed upon. Like said, yes, this great implication, our response to, even if it isn't highlighted, we either had questions on, wanted to prove on or we didn't agree with. And then that's where the notes from the green section come from. I'm sorry that I did not break that down at the beginning of this meeting.
But also. That's my fault, I should have.
Yeah, just so that clarify, cause we didn't have a key at the top of the document. And so I apologize for that as well. But everything that is, um, highlighted is things that were like, oh yes, we completely understand what you're saying there and we agree with it. Things are unhighlighted, then get referred to in the green and some capacity in the dark green.
I have a question for, um, our admin team on, you know, a lot of it is about evaluation of teachers and other staff, right? And so I, I'm curious, do, do you guys employ a three-six to review? And if those who don't know what that is, that's where if people above you review, but people below you also provide input to get a full picture of that, uh, staff member. I don't know if that would then try and, you know, it would flesh out maybe some of these issues that, uh, they're alluding to. If that you're getting a, more than just a person performing an evaluation or at least more than one person providing input, but I don't know what the current process is right now.
I think also that, um, I wanted to ask, going along with his question is when you guys like, what are the consequences that are in place right now? If they were to all review them and something, and like this person is not qualified to work in the district anymore, what is, what would the consequence be? What have they been in the past?
Sure. Chase, you wanna go ahead and kinda talk about evaluation?
So Sean, um, no, we, we don't practice three sixty evaluation right now. It doesn't mean that it can't be looked at as a component for the future, but it's not a part of the standard protocol. In terms of what happens if someone is rated as ineffective on their evaluation. Normally individuals are put on a, um, and it's different for every employee groups. So to speak about teachers. They're put on a performance improvement plan and given an opportunity to, um, improve in the areas that have been identified. They are assigned a support team that helps them work through those different areas. And normally that entails at least another year to do that. Um, and then if performance doesn't improve, they can be recommended for termination to the school board. Teachers have that ability to have a hearing in front of the school board. And so, uh, that can be a consequence. Alternatively, if it's misconduct rather than performance, we could move to termination or some other form of discipline earlier than that, whether that's a written reprimand, a suspension or even up to termination. I'm happy to provide more detail, but that's just trying to be concise and to to, to answer the question, but that's a, a, a brief overview of it.
Thank you.
So I know that the, my name was mentioned a couple of times as the go-to person. And, um, I'm super duper flattered, but don't do compliance. Like, and I think I don't do compliance strategically, like it was the, I had a, a option at one point, you know, to go that path and chose to go the, the coaching route. You know what I'm saying? To, and so that might skew, uh, relationships, uh, in that way. Does that make sense in regards to how I'm utilized right now in the district? And I'm seeing shaking heads. But like, so like, um, so unless I'm misunderstanding what the, the, uh, ask is for me specifically.
Yeah. So thanks for that Laura. I think that's, that's good perspective on there. I, the one thing I was thinking about. Sorry, I should probably, you asked, you ended that with a question, did you? I was already onto my other thought.
I was just saying, unless I, I'm misunderstanding what the ask is, um, in regards to me specifically.
I think, this is Melanie. I think we were looking for guidance from you to define what culturally proficiency and what cultural practices mean in response to the district's response.
Yes, because those, that was, um, the response that was given was culturally proficient response, um, responsive practices to our seventh demand. And we were like, okay, so what does that mean? What does that look like? And responsive practices. And we're like, since there's nothing explicitly, um, labeled underneath these two things that were listed, we're like, well then maybe we need to define them or we need to find someone who can define them appropriately. And that's why we were like, okay, we think this person can definitely do that. And that's what the ask was.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And I think it goes to, to how we would create that, right? I mean, you guys asked that question earlier in the conversation this evening about how that that standard, um, would be added to employee evaluations and who would be part of that conversation. So I think it connects back to that earlier one. I think the one thing I, I wanted to, uh, try to, uh, talk about on this one was, you know, it seemed the spirit of the seventh demand. When, when we even got a chance to talk to you last time was that there's this element of how are we kind of checking on that compliance or even more so compliance about that, that people are able to do their job in a in an effective way and not do harm. And that's the evaluation component, but then there's these other things Chase kinda talked about, like from a misconduct standpoint, like at the end of the thing when something is so bad or when there's a complaint that needs to happen, where does that go? And I think one thing that was communicated is people don't always know the, the appropriate avenue or channels to follow to do that. And so that was part of the suggestion on the ombudsman position to really be an advocate to help people navigate those large processes. That they may not otherwise, um, know what to do or how to do or, or who to go talk to. And then the complaint gets lost or the issue gets you know, it doesn't get dealt with, it doesn't get resolved. Because of the, the structure and the system that's in place that prevents it from being adequately addressed. And so it, it, the thought of on it is really an advocate to, they're not the decision maker on the complaint, um, but they would help the the individual involved in, in whatever situation it happened, know how to navigate the appropriate processes for that. So if somebody need to talk to Jeremy's office in the Equity Department because it was an issue there, they would help them work through that process to do that. So they know who exactly, uh, was, was the right channel to go to. So that was kind of the idea there. I know there were a couple of questions around what that, what that meant or what that would look like. Um, but that was kind of a result of hearing you guys talk before about people having issues come up and then not knowing how to, how to navigate a process.
And there was, um, and we also gave some suggestions of how maybe to add to that process or even change the process of like when, when we figure out exactly what those steps are in these reports. Specifically for faculty and staff, like be, uh, physical reports that then can be like recorded and and, uh, filed, um, also publicly so that we can go back and make sure that these reports are actually being addressed. And that there was, um, not only just an address, but an action to it. And if that action needed to result in certain consequences, like that went through the proper tier of that kind of way, so that we can hold accountability to that. Because then there are the students who do go and they try to report to people that either they're being told to report to or to somebody they feel comfortable with, but then nothing happens past that point. And then, then there's no repercussions to the faculty or staff member who is creating essentially, um, this unsafe environment or, um, performing essentially hate crimes and to these students now feel unsafe or feel targeted or feel, um, offended or, um, feel harmed towards or in these classrooms or in these settings. And so then that would go underneath the, the bullet point within the darker green of seven, like specifying all of that. And then also maybe I'm creating these opportunities of which maybe people already have these conversations. I know that, um, the pandemic has stopped a lot of things from going to fruition. So a lot of these conversations had started, but then couldn't be fleshed out deeply because we had to deal with a serious matter. But having a BIPOC student union or group where there can be this kind of like, let's come and talk. Cause like some people aren't fully comfortable reporting because they either A know that nothing's going to happen if they do, or B knows there, there might be retaliation by faculty and staff if they do so. In, in ways that have been both, um, extremely harmful, but all very traumatic. That can be like, uh, from gaslighting to being completely defensive, not realizing that they're coming from this white place of guilt or fragility that is preventing them from really seeing the harm they are giving to the student. But if they have a BIPOC student union or group, there's something that they can sit and discuss with, um, other students like them and have a, a faculty member who is, is an overseer, whichever way they wanna see that faculty member to be. Who's also like them that they can feel comfortable talking to, so they can have these, um, explicitly safe spaces to just talk and ask questions to really see like, is this something that I need to bring to a bigger, um, to a higher up? Or is this something I can discuss here or something I can just need to address with another peer to this faculty member? So I'm not doing it alone. Or maybe it's a hotline of some kinds, like expanding on these policies or expanding on these avenues for students to feel their voices are being heard when there's mistreatment happening at the school. Because whatever is there either isn't clear or isn't working.
So Matt, this is Charlie again. You know, we had, we've had conversations, you know, over the last many months about the results of the school climate surveys. And we've had some discussions indicating that a strategy we should probably follow, follow as a district is to work on the, what's shown by those surveys about the racial climate in the district. And I wonder if these suggest or these recommendations from the Freedom Rider groups are could be useful to us in establishing processes that we don't have right now for addressing situations, you know, that arise during the course of the school, of a, of school days, of the school day that, that are that are not what we want to have as a the felting, felt climate within buildings. I realize, you know, to creating an ombudsman office would be, take some time and effort. But some of the, some of these other suggestions too could be actual, I think, you know, could actually be quite useful to us in terms of improving the school climate.
Charlie, unfortunately, I think as you started talking, I think Matt got kicked off. I don't see him here anymore. So we will, we can definitely bring that back. So I'm just kind of doing a time check and we are just after seven and we've done a really good job getting through all these. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page of what some next steps are. And so this is my feeling on it. I think as we've kind of gone through and got some clarity and figured out what the exact questions are that IFR was asking. I think we can kind of do a couple of different things. One, I think the district team can give some responses similar to the, you know, the, the response that we had from last Tuesday with some more clarity to answer some of those questions that can be put out there publicly, because I think there were some that we have answers to now that we know what they are. There are some other things that the board needs to take on to discuss what, you know, anything that would be policy related or truly anything that would take funding, I think, has to be sort of a board discussion. And so we can take all of those pieces and bring them to a meeting where we can make sure that we're, we're hitting all of those pieces as well. And I had a third piece as that I was going to say was somebody's responsibility and I've kind of lost it. But I think we've all got some different pieces that we could take all of those questions. I think some of, maybe the third piece was, I think some of them we got answered today and provided some clarity from both sides, which I think has been very great. But I think that as we can kind of digest the, the whole document that has been put together with this conversation. I think we can figure out the few pieces that still needs some work to be done and bring those either the administration to do it directly or the board to take their next steps on. Did I think, did I cover it all? Is that where everybody's had to kind of add some of our next steps?
Yeah. Also, I just wanted to bring attention to at the beginning of the page. On number six, it says A, B, and C. We would also like statements, if you guys are willing to do those about like, do you agree openly support black administrators? And then add it to that as well.
So you just want to know individual board members thoughts on those three?
Well, last meeting, you guys, you pretty much agreed to all of those three additional demands. And we were just wondering if we could get, we were questioning if we could get a written statement in that agreement for the board so that that is on record as well versus just like meeting. I know that these are recorded. Sean explained that to us earlier in the meeting that these are recorded and they get posted later. So it's for public access. But we're just saying for like documentation purposes, as we go forward, there could be a written response that is committed to what you've already committed to essentially verbally through a meeting. But also to, to look closely at C that with, with what Sean's talking about with going in following of next steps. Now that we have quite on both ends, what was a little uncertain or unclear and then ask the questions that need to be asked and you need to answer some questions. Maybe another thing that I'm offering, as Sean was also offering some things is that now that we've done that, we can maybe also clean up this document with the things that have been answered or the things that we were able to like strike out or clear up in different ways. So that then what you guys, the school board, and then what we can also give to this district is working on is what we've already cleared up today. So then we can make sure we're not reanswering some questions or leaving some points out or going over points we've already discussed need to either be out or need to be more clarified or reviewed over. So that then we can look back to talking point six and see which is, oh, no, not C. Well, no, just, I think it's just talking point six, which is like asking for the timeline of any kind of how we can have some accountability of, of what we've been discussing in these demands now that we've got it. So we can really fully look at what next steps require. Is it another meeting discussing the updates to questions that were announced? Or is it, we can give these answers in a different public forum that it doesn't have to be as a meeting. So then at the next meeting, we do see is some kind of voting on the demands or pushing on action and what action that will look like for different demands for different groups. Maybe a split off on how we're going to tackle them. So not everyone's tackling them all at once. But, you know, just so we can actually start brainstorming how we go about this timeline wise. If I'm understanding what you were also trying to say earlier, Sean.
Yeah. And I think, you know, if you're able to go through the document and kind of clean it up, so we aren't duplicating the work, that would be fantastic on, you know, from my perspective. And yes, I think we, we were, we are going to need, you know, at least another meeting on on the board side to discuss the things that we want to put in. I get, maybe I would, I'm kind of speaking out of place here and maybe Matt should do this, but I think what my idea would be is, you know, answer the questions that we can answer and say what we can and can't do right now. But then work through the rest of it and come up with, you know, as a board, what things we are going, you're going to have, you know, a resolution or a policy or all those various pieces that we put together, which ones we are committed to do. And that's what's going to get voted on. But I think it has to have that conversation by the board to kind of work it all out. And then the action meeting, and that's typically how we have our meetings set in each month where the first one of the month is the discussion on something and the second one of the month is the action. So I would, I would propose that we try and do it that way. In the short term, I think as we clean up this document and the district comes up with some of the more clear answers that they've had to the, the questions now that they were, they're asking. And, you know, whatever we can get done ahead of the, any meeting, right? To then say, all right, we still need to additional clarity here or additional work needs to get done here. I think that would be helpful. So very similar to what we've done already, right? Where we met, the district had a response, the equity committee weighed in and you put this document together, which has been fantastic way to work through things. We keep doing that. We did talk last Tuesday about the potential of, you know, having a separate meeting with the Equity Committee because they did have, you know, a large input to, you know, the document that's here. So we may have to look into doing that if that it will help further the cause as well. So potentially lots of meetings, but I think there is a lot of stuff we can do between meetings to keep the conversation moving forward and giving clarity on what everyone has to get done.
I agree. I agree. And I do think that's something we can do with this document. Timeline of that, I don't want to get fully into because I don't want to speak for more than just ourselves because it is multiple people who helped put this document together. But I feel like that should be one of the first steps so that then we can move forward and so as quickly or as soon as possible, we can get that document finished. So that we can be looking at all of the same thing all across the board. Pun intended, then we can do some out, some other next.
Right. I think you're right, Sean, and how you're thinking about it. I think the thing for the board to consider is that you did talk about having an Equity Advisory Committee have a chance to have a conversation with you. So if, if that is something you'd still like to do, scheduling that and then being able to have a time to talk through what action steps you do want to talk some more about, commit to, and then taking some formal action on those action steps. And of course, we can kind of prepare those, you know, Kiki talked about getting their document together. We can continue to refine the action steps we can propose to you all to take based on some of the increased conversation we had here tonight. Just as at least a driver for the conversation when you have it again, and then, you know, taking some action on, on which of the steps you'd like to see committed to and not only a timeline. You know, for when we get together again, but also probably a timeline, I think these guys are asking for and deserve, you know, when they can see some of those things start to happen too, right?
Guess I'm going to throw it out there to anyone if they have any kind of last minute thoughts they want to put together before we all get on our action items. Seeing in the comment there, sorry, Martina, maybe you were going to say the same thing, but Jane says that the EAC, the next meeting for the EAC is the eighth at 5:00 PM and we are invited to join, so.
Well, in order for it to be sort of the board actually there, it would have to be our meeting and a public meeting. So maybe we can discuss that on how that will look if that's the next step. I just wanted to thank the Freedom Riders for taking the time to come through. I mean, I know I've already sat down with you guys, but to have this conversation as a board and to ensure that we're on the same page is extremely helpful. And I know that it's, you know, four thirty to now, it's a long time to be engaged. But I do really thank, you know, everyone, the representatives from the Freedom Riders, as well as those that you have supporting you and our teachers and community leaders, it really does mean a lot to have everybody willing to see our district greatly improve. So I just wanted to throw it out there.
Oh, I would also would like to say thank you for giving us this chance to talk because like that's the biggest thing is that we need to both come together and have the conversation and people are not willing to do that. So the school board willing to do that and go even further and say, we want everyone to come in and we just want to make sure we get everything right. So nothing is being interpreted is a huge step because there are other groups and organizations that are not even trying to do that. They're just consistently trying to misinterpret what we're saying when we are offering to be at the table. So we thank you and we are appreciative and we are grateful for this seat at the table so that we can do this. Because this is how we're going to get change, guys.
Yeah, I'm just going to say I'm super impressed with you guys and I'm inspired. And you guys have gotten more done in less than a month than many people have been able to get done in forty years in our community. And it's, it's inspiring. So thank you.
I'd just like to add my appreciation too. I think you heard at the last meeting, you know, I was very adamant about wanting to get together and listen to you guys because we hadn't. At least I hadn't been able to work with you guys. So this was very helpful to me to be able to hear everything and have that back and forth conversation. So I really appreciate taking the time to meet with us on this.
Okay, well, I guess if that's, if we finish talking, thank you guys and have a good night.
Thank you, guys. And thank you, Sophia, for having the courage to lead through that conversation too and appreciate it.
Yeah, I wanted to add my thanks to Sophia for doing a lot of talking tonight. Not everybody likes to talk and certainly not in front of a whole bunch of people. So I appreciate that work. But we are, as I mentioned at the very beginning, this is a public board meeting. So I have to actually entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So we adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you again, everyone, and we will be talking soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.